The hour is upon us. If I could go ahead and call our meeting to order, please. If I could ask everyone to stand for a moment of silence and then we'll ask Councilmember Lesby to lead us into the pledge of the flag.
Shall we pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Shall we call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Bradley?
Here.
Mrs. Butcher Conway?
Here.
Mrs. Singer Erdley?
Here.
Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mrs. Tingle Sames?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Thank you. We have a floor and a full house. Each of you should have a copy of the minutes of our last regularly scheduled meeting, very brief minutes, if you'd like to look those over for any possible corrections or additions.
Motion, Mayor.
Second.
Thank you. Your motion's been made and seconded. If there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And each council member in your pocket should have received a copy of our latest check register. If you could indicate if you received that. Thank you. With council's permission, I'd like to alter the order of our agenda. It just makes sense that...I believe that much of the crowd, some of the crowd that's with us tonight, is going to be interested in the second reading of the ordinances that we had first reading for and much discussion at the last meeting. Now, we'll find those on the agenda under Item 9, City Attorney, Items E and F, and it seems appropriate to me that since that was the bulk of our conversation at the last council meeting, and council asked for a number of exhibits or information to be shared with the council, that I would like to move those up to the top of our council order tonight and address what I think will be on the minds of most people in the audience. Oh, you'd like to do that real...yeah, yeah. And to that end, what I'd like to do is go through the public comment portion of our meeting. If your comments do not relate to the Yancey Griffith Farm zone change or the Pleasant Valley zone change, if someone is possibly here for an issue other than these zone changes, we want to give you an opportunity to speak to the council before we make you wait hours and hours to have that opportunity to speak. Then we'll then...I'm sorry, Connie, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask you one question real quick that I wanted to ask Andrew about the first reading on the Industry Road. The Onheiser, I just want to ask a question, if I could ask that now. Is that a possibility because she is in the audience?
If you have a question, go ahead.
It's about the 5.1 acres. She owns other two parcels right next to each other, and it's all in the comprehensive plan, and she is...Marianne, could you come up? Just can I ask her to come up real quick, Mayor? Or is...would you rather wait?
No, that's okay.
Just one question, and I'm sponsoring it, so I just want to make sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Marianne?
I just want to know whether it would be wise to add all parcels together when I request annexation rather than just annexing the five acres?
And my answer to her was is that because she only had done the five acres, that she would probably have to wait until January to do the rest of it. It's probably the route that it would have to be.
Yeah, I mean, see, if you're the sole owner of all the properties, I mean, you can submit a consent to annexation, and this council would consider whether to annex those properties, and it could do so together or separately. But tonight, the only annexation ordinance that we have is for the one property.
And you couldn't add the other two?
Which the zone change is contingent upon that. So, yeah, I mean, we could not have that reading here tonight. I don't have any of the information necessary to do that.
Right. We could only do the five acres.
Well, let's...
Move forward to that.
Do the five, and I'll come back for the other two.
Okay. That was our question. Thank you, Mayor.
So, not to be completely confusing to anyone, if there are members of the audience that would like to rise for public comment, if your issues do not include the two zone changes that we talked about at the last meeting, I'd be glad to go through the list and pick out the ones that I think they are. Samantha Wilder, Georgetown College Athletic Training Program.
So, I'm Ms. Wilder. I'm a senior at Georgetown College, and I'm in the athletic training program there. And last year, we sponsored and hosted our first 5K event, and we would love to do that again this year. We raised a decent amount of money. We go to this conference every year in Atlanta. It's a lot of networking and career building. I like learning new things, so you don't have to learn anything this semester. So, we're trying to raise money for, not this year, so we have enough money, but for next year. Let's go.
I see she's got everything.
She does.
I'll make a motion for approval, please.
Okay, thank you. Motion's been made, and the date is...
April 21st.
April 21st.
I'll second.
Thank you. Anne seconded. If there are any questions for Samantha? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Is there anything else that you need to mention?
You're good. You're good.
Going through the list, the next person who signed up is for the zone change. Ms. Onheiser, we'll come back to you. In that, Mr. Bill Corkins.
I came tonight just to visit with my brother for a couple of minutes.
Hadn't seen him for a while.
Had to show a picture of the nephew, and he asked all things they're doing in my neck of the woods. And I mentioned, and he told me I should just let you know that we do appreciate all that the city has done up there at the end of the street, but that it doesn't seem like it's staying that way, and more stuff is being brought in continually. And the problem with the situation is that there are many neighbors who are in court proceedings because of the deal with those there, and they're concerned, and I'm concerned for all of them in our street, that we just have a sweet, happy street is what we're after, where we can all be friends, not worry about somebody making fun of us, pretending like he was mad at our vehicles because the locks go off and beep and just little things. We're all there to have a peaceful, friendly neighborhood, and I just want to bring that to you in the spirit of Christmas. Merry Christmas, Mary, Merry Christmas.
Bill, thank you very much. Let's see, Mr. Molenax is on the zone change, and...Nathan has about as bad a handwriting as anybody else.
Mine?
Yeah.
You're not a doctor, are you?
No, but I write well when I write.
And Ms. Fannin is here for the zone change, and Mr. Price is here for the zone change. Good, so we can dispense with that public comment pretty quickly. If we could then, as we indicated, shift our attention all the way down to Item 9E, which is second reading of the Yancey Griffith Zone Change Ordinance. Last meeting, we had first reading of the ordinance. Of course, the council does not vote on first reading. Council votes on second reading of ordinances, and the council has the opportunity tonight, should they choose to do so, to vote on the ordinance. They don't...they're not required to vote tonight, but they have an opportunity to do so since this is on the agenda for second reading. So, what I'll do is go back through our public sign-in sheet, and as people signed in, we'll call you to the podium to make your comments. And then, at the end of comments concerning the Yancey Griffith Farm zone change, we'll let Mr. Billings answer some of the questions that council had asked him to bring information about. We'll exhaust that conversation to the point of council action or inaction, and then we'll immediately go into the second reading of the Pleasant Valley Zone Change. We'll follow the same order there. We'll give you...if you're here for that issue, we'll give you an opportunity to speak, and then we'll ask Mr. Billings to give us the same information that we asked for. So, with that in mind, it looks like on the Yancey Griffith Farm, first is Mr. Don Bowlinger.
Thank you, Mayor, and member of the City Council. Just wanted to ask a few questions about the development of the plant for...and I'm not against developing. I think it's a good thing that I do...I did make it to the planning and zoning meeting, but I missed the last meeting due to other conflicts, and I wasn't able to be here. But just a couple of questions or comments about what I heard at the planning and zoning was the lot sizes is a concern. Is...they were talking about they wanted to be mainly starter homes and lot sizes of the R...excuse me, I don't know all the terminology in planning and zoning. R1, I believe, the fairly high density, single lot, single family lots in the development. And it was asked about trying to make the lots a little bigger, maybe 10,000 or 12,000 lot, square foot lots, and they said that that would not be able to be done during the planning and zoning. And I think that would be a consideration that...So, I guess my question is, from a planning and zoning, I know that they said they've got a five-year plan or ten-year plans of zoning. So, they go through, and they showed a map and showed agricultural and planning to turn to residential, you know, over the timeframe in the developed city, which I think is great. But I guess I didn't see anything to say in that planning. Is there any plans of how many R1 versus R2 versus the quarter acre lots or larger lots are in that plan? Because when I drive around town and I drive around the bypass, I'm seeing apartments go up across Kroger's. There's what, there's several hundred, it looks like to me, of the buildings there. There's...you go one around, and you see out by Amerson Farm where it used to be, there's lots of apartments going up there. You know, there's lots of apartments and lots of starter homes going up around town. So, I guess the question is, is there a plan in the planning and zoning that says we're looking for a certain percentage of quarter acre lots or half acre lots? Or is the plan just convert everything to R1, the 7,000 square, 7,500 square foot lots?
That is not...the plan is not to do that.
I'm just asking.
Well, I'm trying to answer. That is not the plan. But we don't determine this area will have quarter acre lots, this area will have acre lots. It is the market, and it is the people who own the property that eventually make those development decisions with their investment. In this particular case, if you went to one of the earlier planning and zoning meetings, I believe this was originally presented as eight units per acre density with multifamily included in the development. It's the decision before the council tonight is a plan that is four units per acre with no multifamily.
Okay. So, it is a four because what I heard in the planning and zoning was 7,500 square foot lots, which would be a fifth of an acre.
It's 4.4 per acre.
Yeah, there are roads, there are areas that are undeveloped. There will be lots smaller than that, and there will be lots larger than that.
Okay, so that's fine. And so, I understand that, but I guess the other question, one of the other comments was in the planning and zoning was that there was only one or two lots in Stonehenge that had sold the year before in 2017, and maybe two in 2016. So, they said there's no demand for that.
No, that's a county issue, and we don't have any say-so over those lots or nothing over there.
Let me finish my comment. The other side of it is how many were for sale, and how long did it take them to sell? Because I know that in Stonehenge in 2016, I bought one of the lots out there because I was looking for it, and I bought it within four hours of the time it was listed. I put an offer on it, and I got them. So, I mean, I think there is a demand for a little larger lots, maybe not the acre, acre and a half. I understand that. But it was...it came across in the planning and zoning was there was no demand for it. Well, because only so many sold, but they never said how many went for sale. Because I know if you've got to look at both sides, how many go up for sale versus how many. And countywide, yes, it may be more that way or not. But, you know, within the city, you know, like I'm saying, I think there would be a demand for the 10,000 or 12,000 square per acre lots versus the 7,000, because there is a demand, I think, to some level of the acre or acre and a half lots.
And maybe somebody will provide that development and an opportunity to buy those lots.
Right. So, that's...so, the concern there is, you know, small lot sizes. The other concern is going along with that is the safety in getting the...of getting in and out of the subdivision where it's that high density with, you know, ambulance, fire trucks, and whatever, as well as getting in and out in the traffic from US-25, which is a federal highway. So, that's, you know, to get a light put up there is going to be challenging with that being, you know, a main highway, that it's not really...it's more than just a state highway, I believe. So, it's just the safety and the concern of, you know, the higher density in that area. But I do appreciate that it was asked originally for apartments and whatever, it was, you know, said that they didn't want single residential families, which I do appreciate that. So, it's just kind of the concerns of that and, like I said, making sure that the traffic situation gets taken care of if it does get approved.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Molenax.
Thank you, councilmembers, Mayor. Merry Christmas to each and every one of you. I hate to keep beating a dead dog, but I'm here for the State Department. The State Department has declared US-25 is failing. I think it's beyond failure. I think it's a death trap. Any minute, it's going to happen. The young man that just spoke a few minutes ago has talked about the size of the lots. There's 43,000 plus square feet in an acre. You take 7,500, how many does that make in that acre?
I'm going to assume you've done the math.
No, I wasn't even attempting to bring it up. He brought it up. Seven times four is what? Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
There's 43,000 square feet in an acre. The numbers don't match up. Match up at all. Now, does that include the roads? Does that include the sidewalks? Well, you've got the lots that just keep shrinking down. If I'm looking at this right, okay, I've seen people shaking their head, yes. These lots are not going to be very big at all, and saying that there's four per acre. There's not four per acre. No way to say it in a form or fashion. I haven't seen the new pictures and the graphics on this, but the ones before, they was talking about at the meeting in the courthouse, of having a 50-foot easement all the way around it, and they was talking about 150 foot off of the US-25, giving the state permission to let them do whatever they need to do on the traffic. Well, I went to the meeting, it's the only time I've ever been to it, in October, and I was walking down the hill here, and I was told by one of the zoning people that the state's not going to give us any more money for roads. It's out because they spent the Lexington Way, I think that's what they called it.
Lexington Way.
Lexington Way, or whatever it is, Lexington Way. And we're not going to get any more money from the state. One of the council members made the statement up there, well, we'll go ahead and pass it anyway, and we'll force the state to do something. I was told by one other person up there, you don't force the state to do anything. They do what they want to, and they've got so much to do it, and they'll do what they want to. So, I thought I'd bring some of these points up that was up in that meeting up there. Again, I want to say something about the safety. A lady lost her leg in front of Brother Reverend Cruz's house out there, is one example. I've been hit in my vehicle trying to turn into that subdivision in the back out there, and I'm sure some of the other people have too. Moon Lake, there was a lady killed out there on 25. That road is a disaster. My daughter's battery went flat on her car at Sadieville. I left out at 15 minutes to 7:00 one morning, no, 15 minutes after 6:00 one morning, and the weigh station was closed. Tractor and trailer trucks was lined up bumper to bumper down 25. Took me 15 minutes to get out of my subdivision. She was trying to get to work. I had to go to Sadieville and jump her vehicle before. Whenever they open up that weigh station out there, 25 out there is a death trap. When I get out the Interstate 75 to jump on to go to Sadieville, the trucks are backed up from the weigh station all the way back to where you get on the interstate. Now, I know you had troubles with the city dump or the dump down there. Looks like to me that you would build...if you build a house, you've got to put a foundation in that house before you put the walls in. It seemed like to me you would fix the road before you try to make the subdivision out there, in my opinion. If you go around some of these roads around here, you see these little interways off, and evidently state's trying to tell you, this is where things need to be done. I don't know. This is all new to me. I appreciate each and every one of you stopping and taking a straight and safety look at this situation, and thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can we maybe clarify one thing for him and maybe for a few others that might be speaking, just so that it doesn't...you know, sometimes when you keep talking about things, sometimes you start thinking of that context.
I assume that Nathan would address some of these, but go ahead.
I'm sure he would, but I'm afraid that everybody's going to get up and maybe repeat the same thing, and it may be helpful for you or Andrew or whomever. But the zoning request now is R1C, right, throughout the whole piece of property? I guess there might be a piece, though, that would be conservative or conservation? Is that...
About 28.
In the back.
Seventeen.
And does that play into the equation of the four-point? That piece doesn't, but the roads do, correct?
Roads, sidewalks, medians, greens. There might be some green space in between roads.
Right, right. Setbacks?
Setbacks will be included, I would think.
Okay. All right. But I think, you know, the one thing consistent has been the question of the how many lots per acre and how many they're going to have. But when it's netted out, it'll be the four-point four.
I mean, think about it.
And I know that your math problem was 5.8, but there's other pieces of real estate within the project that play into the mix to change that rate.
Every single house has road footage.
Right.
So, I mean, you've got to think that a substantial portion of that...
Right, right.
And it'll be apparent on the math, substantial portion of that is going to go to road and sidewalk.
Let me ask you another question. In our last, the first reading, the contractor was asked to put price range with these houses on the table. And it was, if I heard this correctly, I wear double hearing aids, but if I heard this correctly, he said $165,000 to $350,000 for the home sales. If you're going to build the smaller homes on the back side and want to put the larger homes on the front side, who's going to buy a home $350,000 with $165,000 homes next to them? It seems to me this is made up just to fail for the purpose of coming back to you people and saying, well, we can't sell them out there, so we're going to change this front. We're going to just change to put commercial or...would they have it drilled up before? Apartment houses or whatever you want to say? I don't know what term I use. So, I want all of you to stop thinking about that too, please. Tom, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to point out, on the highway improvements, Al, it's my understanding that all of the road improvements will be the responsibility of the developer. State won't have to put a dime into these improvements, that this will be done at the design and the expense of the developer of the subdivision.
The only thing the state have to do is give permission going in that process.
The state will have to give permission for the road to be improved and for the turn lanes to be added, but that will not be a state expense. We don't have to wait on the state, or we...and the big thing for me we don't have to do is, we do have other requests into the state for roads that we think need a lot of work. I don't want to take away from those projects by the state having to think they have to invest money here. All of these road improvements should be the expense of the developer in this question, completely.
Because the developer always going to take care of this, say, what, 500 feet or 600 feet down at one side there? That's going to be a bottleneck for the traffic. You're saying, what, 450, if I understood correctly, somewhere that may look 450 houses?
And actually, we've asked for it to be shown diagrams of that. I think there's turn lanes in both directions. The turn lane going south is going to be primarily for the benefit of Stonehenge. So, let's see the diagrams. But your concern about the state having to pay for these improvements is not correct. Now, if somebody tells me differently, I'll call you back up and apologize for telling you that, but I think that is correct.
Thank you, counsel.
Tom, one comment he made during the planning and zoning that some of the, a couple of the council members said, go ahead, it wasn't a council member at the planning and zoning, but you commented, but a couple of the council members said, go ahead and we'll annex it.
That was a disowning over in the courthouse. So, I was implying, although, it was another one of the council members.
Thank you. Yes, sir. And also for the, for this particular zone change, Stephen Price.
If you saw the yesterday's Herald Leader, front page story, pedestrians, 10 dead already in Bay County this year. I am proudly a pedestrian, and I'm threatened every day on the streets of Georgetown. And I could do more for you and for everybody in this town as a pedestrian than I could ever do as a motorist, because I don't have the expense of keeping a car running so that I can be productive of the real essential staple materials that everybody needs, which is food, fiber, proposed, especially in this kind of weather, and timber. You, I, anybody, we could all produce these essential materials on any other piece of land within walking distance of where we live, but most people are so busy paying for the car, using the car, that they're never on their feet, and they're losing the opportunity to be productive. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all of the sign-ins for public comment on the Yancey Griffith Farm. Nathan? The council had asked a number of questions at the last council meeting and asked for additional information and additional diagrams, as long as they could be found within the existing record. And if you're prepared to help the And if you're prepared to help the council with those answers, this would be a time to do that. Would you please?
Thank you. Nathan, here's a clicker if you wanna scroll through your own slides.
Yes, sir.
Yes, counsel.
We don't, we don't stand on, on that.
If you don't, the judge will say, what are you doing, Mr. Billy?
That's when the railings swarm in and grab you.
Um, I have, some of these, I have a short presentation, which is the, the evidence that was submitted at the zone change hearing. And then I have a graphical depiction of what the traffic study suggested and called for that you all asked to be presented tonight. I have that graphical depiction both in a phone board that you all could pass around and look at, and I also have it on the screen. Um, and of course, I have a, a blow up as well of the actual adulting plan. I'll pass these around, it will also be up here on the screen, but that way if people wanna maybe see a lot more of the detail, they'll be able to observe it from these. I can start them over here and pass them around.
If we could start them here and then maybe end up with them, uh, in the front where the audience can see them as well, that's.
And, uh, the, the, one of the changes I would talk about is that the development plan, there was questions about the design saying R2, because that's what was filed with the application to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so we just updated the reference on that from R2, R1C, so that would clarify the request. We have to go back to them with the development plan, so it's not an official document that's adopted, but I just, we changed the lettering on it so everyone wouldn't be confused by what the Planning and Zoning Commission actually approved. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
I'll start these around.
Clarification, that's something I asked Nathan to do, because we have that as an exhibit to the ordinance, so it needs to reflect the, accurate, accurately reflect the reality. We'll get that second TV screen, I promise.
Everybody see that okay?
Will suit down.
So, so, all this is in the slides again, what I wanted to do is sort of start in an overview, sort of tell you all that the references to the R2, which I think there were a lot of questions at two weeks ago, are because that's the application that we filed. The planning, um, staff recommended against R2 and suggested all of the residential development of the property should be an R1C, and the seventeen plus acres in the back should be a C1. And that's ultimately what the planning commission approved, is that all of the property that could be developed is an R1C. And that the acreage in the back that's largely floodplain would be a C1. Uh, so all the references to R2 at this point are only for discussion purposes, because that's what was filed, and there is no request for an R2 zoning today. And so I just wanted to clear up, uh, that perhaps ambiguity from before. What this means is, um, a little over seventeen acres would be conservation, which would be, um, probably owned by the HOA. My understanding is the city does not want the green space, if you change your mind, we're happy to talk to you all about that. If not, there will be, um, one or more homeowner associations to own and maintain that. And that would be a hundred and five acres, a little more than that, um, that would be an R1C. R1C is single-family residential only, that means single-family detached housing. It's not apartments, it's not townhouses, it's not condos, it's not even duplexes. It's single-family detached housing. Um, after the last hearing, I was told on my client that I had referenced four units per acre, um, and, which was incorrect, it's actually four point four. Andrew said, yeah, you said four in the hearing, and, and I didn't mean to mislead anybody, it's actually four point four, and that's based upon, um, the zoning origins in Scott County that actually says four point four for an R1C. Um, you have seen the development plan that's we're passing around here, um, laser on it.
Yes, but it won't show up on the screen.
Oh, okay.
Technical.
Well, right here, where the fifty-two point acres used to say R2, and that's what we, we changed, said it's R1C. And over here, in the site, site statistics, if I can spit that out, also said R1 or R2, we've corrected both of those on what's being passed around, and this is the same copy as what's being circulated. So this is the close-up of that, that shows you that it's R1C, just for clarification. This is the blow up of the other areas to show you R1C, and R1C, now, there are almost three acres across the creek that is, it's outside of the floodplain, whether or how we can do something with it remains another question because of that, but it's, because it's out of the floodplain, we can zone in R1C. Then, of course, the floodplain area is the C1, which will be the green space part. Um, this is the aerial view of the property, just for the, for the site location, that you will all sort of generally know where it is. But you'll actually see that, it's actually a really long distance along Cincinnati Pike. It runs all the way over to the railroad track north, has a sort of weird square up at the top. While this doesn't exactly show the floodplain area, you can see from the creek here, if I were to go back there, you can see the width, although here there's a lot of green space. If you actually go back to the plain, you'll see how far over the floodplain comes, which actually reduces the developable land on the property. Um, so the legal standard is pretty simple, under ARIS-100, which is the state zoning statute. Essentially that, if it's in conformity with the comprehensive plan and future land use map, uh, it's appropriate for a zone change. In this case, the zoning we're requesting, R1C, is called urban residential. So if you look at the future land use map for Georgetown and Scott County, I wish the laser showed a little better here, but you'll see the box is the farm in question, and you'll see up the top, future language category three, which is this. I'm sorry, future category two is urban residential, and it shows the property. You'll see the, the red dashed line on this map, that is the city annexation line, and the, the purple boundary is what was annexed by the city, I forget when, not too long ago, when Whittaker Bank brought in its property across the railroad track. This track was also already annexed by the city, so this zone request doesn't include an annexation, since some of your zone requests might have, I know there's two other adopted today. It's already been annexed into the city, uh, which is all the more reason why the zoning is appropriate. Basically, the land use map was adopted long before today, that you all said, we want this area to be single-family residential, uh, multifamily residential, or urban residential. And R1C falls in that category. So, there was a question a second ago about the sizes of lots. Uh, one of the things that this development has proposed, um, was a, a very diverse group of housing options, which include single-family patio homes, which are the entry-level price point, but we have mid-level, single-family houses and estate lots. So if we go back to our design here, you'll see, we have a lot of patio homes, like on the front side. We have some larger mid-tier lots here and here, and we have estate lots back in the corner and along the, the floodplain. What that means is, there will be lots of different sizes, those lots will be priced at different price points, and there will presumably be houses of different price points across there. So, I think someone had the question, Mr. Monax, he commented earlier about, I'll use my words, a bait and switch by us. I don't think that, that that's the intent of the developer. We have a minimum lot size that the planning commission put upon us that we have to meet. But we also have a density requirement, um, and the four point four really works like this. There's what's called a gross acreage, and there's net acreage. And gross acreage is when you look at the entire property, and you get the total, uh, the total from that. So this, the gross acreage here is, is a hundred and twenty-two point something acres. But when you back out, your roads, your common areas, your sidewalks, um, other infrastructure, if there has to ever be a sewage pump plant, if there has to be roadway along 25, what's usually back out all of the non-residential lot area gets you a net acreage. And that's how you get to the four point fours based upon the net acreage. So hypothetically, um, when we get to, uh, the, the development stage, when we're actually plodding lots, while forty-three thousand and change may be the number of square feet in an acre, no developer actually captures forty-three thousand square feet for development. It is significantly lower. But even if, even if all of that other development would still leave us, I think your math was pretty simple, seven thousand, seventy-five hundred times four is, oh, thirty thousand. Let's say there's thirty-two thousand feet left. Well, we just can't say, let's try to make another lot, we just have to fill that into our lot size or make common area. We are still capped at how many units per acre we, we can put, and it's, and it's an average, it's not across the board, it's not every acre you draw out and you say four lots in this acre, it's an average across the board. So that's, we're still capped at that four point four, if that was ever to change. We have to go back through this entire process again. So it's not like we just come in here and, and file an application and have a hearing and it's done. We have to file an application with the planning staff, we go through the planning process with staff, they make a recommendation, we have a full-blown hearing, there's a mailing to all the neighbors again. We go through the planning hearing, after the planning hearing, we come to you all, and we have to go through two hearings again. Needless to say, if that day comes, that's a big if, there is a significant public process in place, just like for this zone change, to protect the neighbors from that type of bait and switch from happening. It can't happen, in other words.
Nathan? Well, a quick question, uh, on the plan, seventy-five hundred square feet, is that the minimum lot size, Andrew, that, that's been discussed or that we've been given? I know that number's been given to us, but in, in what capacity?
So, that's one of the recommendations, and Matt Summers is here tonight to talk more about that. The staff recommended that that be a minimum lot size for developments, and the planning commission has approved that. Now, it's not part of the zone change, because the zone change is just rezoning it, but it's one of the development conditions that the planning commission has. So when we take, assuming there's a zone change approval tonight, when we take this conceptual drawing back to them for a development plan, we have to comply with that seventy-five hundred square feet, as well as a bunch of other conditions, I think there were about twelve or thirteen they approved. We have to satisfy all of those, uh, later on. So, every lot we do has to have that minimum square foot, it could go above that, but it can't go below that.
Okay, 'cause that plan showed some fifty and fifty-five, but it was just a conceptual point.
That's correct, that's correct. And that's why, I mean, that's, that's probably our tenth or eleventh iteration of a plan, every time we do one, it's not like you just throw it together fifteen minutes. I mean, it takes lots of time from thoroughbred engineering to redesign it. So, in the zone change, what you file is the conceptual development plan, uh, and that's what, 'cause you have to have something that would look like. It will be close to that, but it's not gonna be exactly like that. So, there was, again, a reference tonight to apartments or townhouses, and I think you all, I hope you all are clear by now. While we had suggested that originally, we heard loud and clear from planning staff, we heard loud and clear from the planning commission, um, and we heard loud and clear from the public. And so we have, you know, even when it was, um, before, we said we liked that flexibility, we heard them say no, and we understand that, which is why we've agreed with their R1C request. Under the R1C zoning, we cannot have multifamily, it's prohibited. So even if we wanted to do it, we couldn't do building inspection, they would say, your application's denied. You can't get a, a building permit for a multifamily in this development.
But you could, you certainly could go back through the process.
We would have to go back through this entire process in order to do that.
But you could do that if you needed to.
That's correct.
If you wanted to.
That's correct, that's correct. Just like today, Dennis Anderson, Anderson, um, Emerson, Anderson has a development plan down there, he could hit a, a place, say, you know what, I wanna stop, I don't wanna do apartments, uh, or I wanna increase my density, I wanna do more commercial. You know, my, my, my commercial units are written out. Anybody who owns land can go back through a, a zone change process, it doesn't matter what the zoning is. But, there's a process, and it's public, there's notes, and that is the protection for people who don't like it, that they get to make sure that they have input and comment, and that things just aren't done in the dead of night without protection.
Right, that's pleasant valley.
It's just, it's just how, it's just how it has to be, it's because.
And, and Nathan, should that ever occur, that process would end, City Council.
That's correct.
Council would have to approve any future change.
And it would have to.
Not you, not the developers, not the state, not planning and zoning, but this council would have to approve that zone change.
That's correct, and it would do it by two readings, just like we've had to do this one too, you'll have a first reading and then a second reading. So this was a, this one, we did not update this drawing, but this one was where, not where the turn lanes are, but example of what the landscape buffer would look like. This is the only development in the city of Georgetown, uh, so I'm in Scott County that I know of, that re, that requires a one hundred and fifty-foot setback from the existing US-25 right-of-way. Meaning that we're not going to have houses that back right up to the road. We have a significant buffer before we have to do that. Staff walked through a couple of iterations, fifty feet, a hundred feet, and, uh, to staff's credit, they said no, because of the rural greenway along here, we wanna respect that space. And even though some of the single-family lots back up into here, we wanna create that buffer, so this was an example of that that was submitted. Um, and this is the buffer that you can see there now. This again is shows, it doesn't show the proposed improvements, which I'll get to that in a second, but it shows the buffer that's created. So if you just look at it in comparison to the single-family lots here, the buffer is deeper than some of the proposed single-family lots. That's a, a huge benefit, we think, just to the visual impact along the road, as well as that buffer should serve to decrease pedestrian interaction with the road. Uh, again, there's the proposed site we have, and this is from our traffic study, uh, that shows the way they studied, in the blue line here along Cincinnati Pike, it shows the school, and so is the intersection of US-25 and Kentucky-32. So I think that the traffic and the road improvements were probably the two biggest points from the prior discussion. I wanted to get to the background, just before we got there, to make sure I covered all the stuff from before, or if there was anything that people had, uh, from the prior presentation. So, um, if anyone wants to see it, I have a copy, it's, it's in the overall materials, but I have a copy of the thoroughbred engineering report, I have tabbed conclusion pages, if anyone would like to see it. I'll just pass it over, and you all can pass it around if you'd like to look at it. There's a lot of data, a lot of numbers in that study. I'm not an engineer, so I rely, just like in all these, I rely upon a designer, um, I rely upon a design team, um, and, you know, as part of this, you know, we did, it takes a big team of people to do this. So, we just, for example, we heard some questions about, like, what's it, what's it gonna look like? And so we wanna let y'all know that we've hired two people, um, we've hired Jeff Singer as a landscape architect to help us design the entrances into the subdivision here. And we've hired Reva Feldman, who is gonna help us, uh, design the houses in the subdivision, um, to be of a character and architecture and a design that's complementary for an area that currently buffers on one side, county property with one-acre lots, uh, with what we're trying to build here. Um, so, inside of the traffic study, there are a bunch of findings, um, and what I'm gonna try to do is sort of summarize them. The most important is probably this, that there is a level of service called an LOS that traffic studies look at. Every, um, and there's a standard for the Kentucky Department of Transportation, under the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet guidelines, that certain developments, once they hit a threshold, have to do a full-blown traffic study, so we're required by law to do this study for zone change. As I said last time, it actually has three updates, we did the initial one, we did a revision, we had to do a third revision, because of questions the planning commission asked, and that's to make sure that the data is correct. This shows that US-25 is, currently operates at a level of service C. Now, this, there's a, levels of service are A, B, C, D, E, and F. Inside of the study, there's actually, there's a page that actually describes what they are. F is, although you would think F means failing, it just means it's the worst. E and D are also probably technically failing. C is it's bad, B is it's okay, and A is optimal. If I were to tell you the number of roads that actually have a level of A and D, you would be really, really surprised. You're talking about side roads and side residential areas that have a couple cars on it a day. The vast majority of roads, um, run at low Bs or Cs or even Bs, uh, for a couple of reasons, one of which is most of our roads were designed, um, many, many years ago. They were designed not with cars, or trucks, or trailers, or commercial vehicles, or tractor-trailers, or school buses. A lot of our roads were designed for horse and buggy, or for carriages, or they were designed for a time when one family had one car, it didn't have two and three and four vehicles. Or when people were more pedestrian in nature and they shared vehicles. That's just how our roads are designed. So US-25, for example, you have wider tractor-trailers today that travel one inch, and it's just, it's one example of, of, memorable across the United States with this. Here is what, um, this, this, the study found, that it currently operates at an average level of service of C, and that's on page twenty-one if you wanna reference it, and a PM peak of levels of service D and F. and a PM peak of levels of service D and F at other times. What they do is measure peak times. So from like 7:00 to 9:00 in the mornings, a peak time when people are going to work or dropping their kids off at school. And peak times in the evening when people are getting off work, going home, running their kids to sports activities, picking up their kids from schools. So those peak periods are really important because that's when it's the worst, if that makes sense. The study notes that between now and 2030, it has to look, it has to look at traffic patterns two ways. It has to look at it without the development. So we have a standard, a benchmark, and we have to look at it with development. And what it found is, and they're projections, right, because we don't have a crystal ball. Both projections are based upon the growth in traffic with the development, without the development, that this development doesn't make the levels of service any worse along the US-25. And that's not to sit here and tell people that it's good. It should say that we don't make it worse than what it is or what it will become. Now, the intersection at US-25 and 32, back to there for the map, so you all know this intersection well. It's the one that lots of people, including us, have problems with. The north and southbound actually have levels of service ranging A and B here. There's a reason for that in a second. East and westbound has levels of service C and D for the most part. This intersection will also continue to operate at the same levels of service through 2030. The intersection at US-25 and 32 essentially operates under what traffic engineers call an uncoordinated signal timing pattern. Basically, green lights for north and southbound run from 10 seconds to 60 seconds, and they're inconsistent, but they're longer than east and westbound. So what does that mean? Northbound and southbound traffic get to go on through. People coming through Champion Way to turn north can't turn if there's some flow-through traffic. So north and southbound lanes have a benefit. East and westbound lanes have an impediment. Does that make sense? So essentially then, east and west lanes onto 25 must yield incoming traffic. So if you're coming down Champion Way and you want to turn left, you've got to yield. So the main recommendation for here is absent significant road improvements, which would have to be funded by the county, or more appropriately, the state through federal highway grants, which is not likely right now. The recommendation is to change the signal timing. Now, because the level of service, let me display it and show you. Because the level of service on north and, north and southbound is an A or B right now. If you change the signal pattern, it will affect north and southbound, which will become a little bit worse. But it will make east and westbound a little bit better. So you have to trade off one for the other. But the party to do that is not the city. It is not the county. It is not the developer. It is the Kentucky Department of Transportation. My understanding is that requests have been made by the city to have the state look at this. My understanding is that the school system has made a request, and that those requests, I don't want to say they haven't been answered, they just have, the timing hasn't been done yet.
I have an update on that. We have an update on that.
We do have a pretty significant update for the council. They've been asking about this intersection and another one. We have learned that the north-south timing of that light is on a time-of-day protected phasing. Which basically, protected phasing is where you have a longer green left turn light. That's called protective phasing. Time-of-day protected phasing indicates that in the morning during the school rush hours and in the afternoon during the school rush hours, we have that protected phasing going north-south. They have evaluated the east-west. Right now, the east-west is not on protected phasing. It goes immediately to a yield. District 7 has determined that east-west should also have time-of-day protected phasing. District 7 is our Lexington area transportation garage. We worked with them first. District 7 is going, has made their request to the Transportation Cabinet, or the cabinet, to agree with that phasing. So we think that we've made the right request. It's cleared District 7, and we're waiting on a ruling from the Transportation Cabinet to give us east-west relief.
That's exactly what the traffic engineering report said. Is by changing the timing of those lights, that the left-hand turn lanes will allow more traffic to go through. But it will also, it will happen, by impact, affect the other oncoming traffic. By changing the timing, that it will lessen the time that lane capacities are reached called stacking, which where cars can't turn left, they actually stack back up into the main lot, main road, then they can't go straight, then they can't turn right. And that by allowing that phasing, by actually allowing a green left turn, it will allow that stacking to release, and the lane capacity then improves, but also causes some additional delay. It's just from the oncoming traffic.
They're just trying to level it out on both lanes.
Yeah, it's not perfect, but it's...
For the council's benefit, the other intersection that we've expressed concern about is on Payne's Depot and the bypass. And we have asked for a protected phasing there, and the state says it does not have it now, and it will not have it in the future.
Unless the traffic counts change.
Unless traffic counts change. So we did get the answer we wanted for this intersection. We have not gotten the answer we want yet for...
Please do keep your question.
For 62 and the bypass.
So currently, you all know, this is, this way is north. I turned these or landscape, landscape to help sort of fit on the slide. So this way is north, this way is south. You see, it's a two-lane road. This is the existing entrance to Stonehenge. Up here, this is the existing 10-foot gravel road into the farm property. That's just to give you sort of existing north-south two-lane traffic flow. This is one of the foam boards. I'm going to walk through this a little slowly. I tried to describe it last time with a pen and paper, and I'm a horrible artist, so probably didn't go too well. So this is what the traffic engineering study suggests. I'm going to walk through each one of these. This is, this is a area, this is not a engineered drawing, meaning it doesn't have line of sight, it doesn't have depth of asphalt. But it is, it shows the concept of what is required by the traffic study and what will be submitted to the Kentucky Department of Transportation. They don't pay for these improvements, as someone said, I think it was the mayor or somebody said, "We pay for this, these improvements, but they have to approve our design." So if we do something, they say, "No, you need to lengthen this, or decrease this, or widen this." We have to do whatever they say, because they're the ones who are in charge, so to speak, of approving it. We then have to just build it and pay for it. So I'm going to show that first, you currently have a current southbound through lane. That stays. And so that's on the west side. Next, what you do is you have two southbound left turn lanes. So essentially here, for traffic coming south, you will have a turn lane in that they will come in the middle. They will then be able to, when traffic slows down, turn left. What this does is it allows stacking where those two yellow areas are to mean that traffic that's going south can continue on because people who will pull into the left turn lane, and then pull in here, and can stack what is called, so that traffic continues south. I think that makes sense to everybody. And then we have two of those on this development because they have two entrances. The next is, there's a northbound left turn lane into Stonehenge. I think you said you got rear-ended pulling into the subdivision.
Yes, sir.
This is exactly what this will help that problem. Because currently now, if you're going northbound and you want to turn left, you're going to hold up all the traffic behind you. And if somebody's not paying attention, that's when you get rear-ended. Now, it's not as great as a four-lane road, but it is better than the existing two-lane. Because again, it allows people to turn in a center turn lane, to turn left, and wait till traffic clears. The reason that's better is because then you have a through lane for the northbound traffic. Now, this is where the southbound lane that we talked about, the southbound left-hand turn lane, the southbound left-hand turn lane, and the northbound right, and the northbound left-hand turn lane, that basically uses the existing current roadway. Does that make sense to everybody? This then is where we, it starts to encroach on the property that we have, and we have to do this. We then bump over, you'll see how it turns down here. It bumps down, there's a new northbound through lane that comes all the way through the property, and then merges back up at the north end of the property. What that allows is for people to make this center turn lane into Pinehurst traffic. That's an incredible safety mechanism that doesn't exist today.
There is safety, on some of your improvements, there's safety when you go certain directions. But what I think you've made worse to some degree from Pinehurst, which maybe they don't turn that way as much, but you mentioned earlier about going to Sadieville. So now when he turns out of Sadieville and he goes north, now he has to go over two lanes of traffic that before he only had to, his vision was clear to see one. Because I know in other areas, when you come out and there's the stack lane, of course, you're not going to move out with somebody sitting there to turn in if you're going that direction. But sometimes because of that stack lane, it's, now you're crossing two lanes, and your vision sometimes can be blocked by a car coming into the stack lane that you still may have time to turn out, and the car turning into that. So I could see that could be some problems.
That's correct. In fact, if there's a car in the northbound through lane, that can perhaps serve as impediment. It's not exactly by sight, but if they're stacked up.
Right. So I see, I see your improvements for, if you're going towards town. I see the, I see potential of the improvements, but if you're going out of Pinehurst, north...
They can still come around to the north entrance and still hit 25, where it's still two-lane.
True, but if you live on Pinehurst, you're going to use Pinehurst, so.
I don't disagree with you. It's there, it's never a complete win, but it is still much better in the overall picture. And there's still a way for people who want to enter on our two-lane to still do it. The loop is not really that far up. Then we have the deceleration, northbound right turn lanes into the subdivision in both those locations. That width and the median and the shoulder that will take there, those road widths are probably 10 to 12 feet each, plus another 10-foot median. So there's probably 30 or so feet that will come in, into that, maybe 40 feet. But that will be inside of that 150-foot buffer area. So even with using that, there's still 100 to 110 feet of that buffer that's created. So there's still a significant...
I have another question for you. Why did you only put 100 feet on the first right turn lane? The northbound right turn lane, the first one?
You mean right here?
No, no, back toward town.
Right here?
That one. Why did you only put 100 feet on that?
I don't know that it's measured specifically as to being 100 feet, other than the...
On that, it said 100, 200, or whatever?
Yeah. I, this is my understanding, is that we just ask him to draw a conceptual drawing. It's not engineered to say, is whether it's going to be 100 feet, or 200 feet, or 300 feet. There's a scientific engineered manual you have to use to calculate those. We just ask him to draw this in schematic. Whatever the engineering minimums are is where you'll start. And whatever the Transportation Cabinet says they want for safety is what we'll do. It won't be 100 feet, it'll be whatever the traffic cabinet says.
So the whole, the whole concept of this traffic improvement depends on where you get that subdivision built?
That's correct. That's correct. And, I mean, again, I don't want to probably hit this too much, but this is not a $50,000 intersection. This is several hundred thousand, a half million dollars of improvements that we have to pay for, or more.
Will that be done before the houses are constructed?
Yeah, it will be, it will be in the process. I can't tell you when this will be completed, because there's a process for that. But the development doesn't start until this is done as part of our public improvements. We have, so in the planning and development process, not only do we have to do a zone change, then we go back for a development plan. But once we have our development plan, we then have to come with all these construction plans. And those construction plans, your engineering department looks at, to get Kentucky State of Transportation approval. And until those, those construction plans are done and approved and certified, we don't even get COs, or I'm sorry, we don't even get building permits for houses. So we put in hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars of asphalt. And in all, the infrastructure package here is probably about $10 million, which looks at roads, aggregate, asphalt, concrete, curb, gutter, sidewalk, sewers. So now, that's not, we're not going to sewer every house. We've put in the trunk lines, the main service lines. All of that stuff has to be in before we can pull a permit. So there's a, it's a much, that's why I said, it's going to be a year and a half or two years before we start to build the first house.
I've talked to several different people that lives out in Stonehenge, and I think one of their main concerns was the traffic condition. And lots was an issue too, but we don't have the authority to tell you to change the lot size. But the, but the traffic was, was a major, major issue as far as... And I told them, I didn't think you would do anything until you had that built anyway, so.
Yeah. Well, we, I mean, the part of the, part of the development process is, until engineering signs off, we don't, we can't pull a, pull a building permit. That's just, so our roads have to be in, you have to have base coats asphalt. The other thing is, I encourage the residents out there to understand, it doesn't help us to build a development with 400-plus single-family homes if traffic is so bad that nobody wants to go out and look at a house, or they go out there and look at a house and they can't go out of the subdivision, rear-end the subdivision. That doesn't help us market and sell lots. So we have every incentive in the world to help with traffic issues out there. It's a, it's a self-interest, but that self-interest helps other people around there too.
Nathan, I've got two questions.
Yes, sir.
In addition to the road improvements, assuming that this passes, am I assuming correctly that there's going to be proper lighting at both entrances, specifically when it's dark?
So you're talking about like, like high-level, like high-powered, like what, the interstate?
Sir, any plant lighting at all?
Yeah, we'll have a lighting package as part of the landscape plan that we have. Because in the front here, this doesn't really show up, but in the front, we have a central median. We have, coming in, we have a wide lane coming in with a central median with, in this way, a landscaper who will design a package with stone or found whatever the company wants to do. That's beyond my skill set. We have exit lanes that will have right-hand through and left-hand turn lanes. And all of that will have a lighting package. Now, I don't know that they will have what I would call as Department of Transportation, like what you'd see on the interstate, unless they, unless the state requires that. I don't know if they do or not, so I don't want to mislead you. If they require us to have lighting in that intersection, that's what we have to have. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I guess, well, I realize that. I understand that part. I guess, especially when you're adding...
And the streetlights in the neighborhood too. I don't know if that's what you're asking.
No, just when you're, obviously, we're talking about potentially, again, this is down the road, but if we're going to look at widening that road between the two entrances, plus you've got a subdivision on the opposite side of the street that has two entrances, any type of lighting at all is going to be better than zero lighting.
Well, let me ask the client, Nathan, if you all know if light, if, what I call Transportation Cabinet lighting is required at that intersection? I don't know the answer to that. You know that? You guys know? It's something that I'm happy to make a note of, make sure that we ask Brett Combs, who's an engineer with Thurbred. You'll probably know Brett from his work, long time with the city. If they're required out there, encourage him to look at that as part of an intersection package, because it would certainly add to safety up there.
And then, second question, I'm sorry. Second question, going back a few minutes ago, when you were talking about that buffer zone from 25, as you're on 25 moving in towards the subdivision, what is that actual, how close would the, how far away would the closest house be to 25 if this moves forward? What's the distance, the closest house to 25 going to be?
Let me come back real quick and I'll show you. So this is the 100-foot buffer zone, and this again doesn't show the four lanes of traffic that would have to be built out. But assuming that there is a light width of about 40 feet that would be taken out of the green space, we're talking about 110 space from the edge of the median, the edge of the gravel, to the back of a house we've even built a setback line. That's the buffer zone. So that 150 feet is from back of house to existing roadway, and however much of that we have to use for existing improvements would come in at 150 feet. But that's still, 110 feet is the depth of most starter homes in Colony, or what, a lot of our Pleasant Valley, or even, or some of them in Kane Wood, or Payne's Landing. So if you can imagine basically, a house and then another house lot before you ever even get to the next improvement. So coming forward on the traffic plan, I just, this uses the same base map as the foam board, but I want to walk you through each of these lanes so you can sort of see where they are. So one of the questions earlier, and I included this slide, so I thought it might come up tonight, was the opposition from some of the Stonehenge people. And we, you know, on the development side, I think I do a lot of homeowner-side work, so I can say this with confidence. On that side of the table, I often, I often feel, so I know that there can be a possibility to feel that their voice is not being heard, or that what they say is not being listened to. And even if a zone change passes, that doesn't mean that's not, it doesn't mean that's true that they weren't heard. And some examples I can tell you are, look at the size of the development that we started with, with the density that's been essentially have. Look at the zoning, we wanted R2 in part of it, that has been at the single-family. And we've... And we've, while we asked for it, the planning commission, we've not fought against that once the planning commission made the decision. They did, however, really want us and asked us to do one acre minimum lots. And so what I did is we pulled some data from PVA and from, actually, I'm sorry, from LVAR. What we showed is that since 2012 in Stonehedge, there were 17 lots, an average of three a year. Bringing those lots out of this data, inside of Scott County since 2013, there were 11 total one acre lots sold, again, extracting Stonehedge. What that tells me to Stonehedge is the premier one acre subdivision in Scott County. And the one reason why is, it is essentially one acre rural lots that are but the city boundary. I don't know if that will ever be annexed in the city or not, that's beyond the question for tonight. But it makes Stonehedge a very desirable place because of its location and the lot sizes that aren't really achievable anywhere else in Scott County. But if you look beyond Stonehedge, it makes it a little more challenging. And so one of the things is if we look at the number of homes sold since 2013, it's 4,941. This data was back in late October, early November. The number of one acre lots is 0.22 percent. So one fifth of 1 percent. At that ratio, it would take us, depending on how, 15, 50 years to sell out. And, and part of this is simple economics. While it may sound great for people to say, I would be willing to pay a one acre lot. When you tell them the cost per one acre lot is going to be 185 to $200,000, they say no thank you. Because, coming back to what we talked about, a half million dollar in road improvements, $10 million in infrastructure, a lot of that infrastructure is put in regardless of the number of houses you have. Your roads are put in to access houses. Now, you may have a little variance, your sewer, your trunk lines, your main lines for water, your, your utilities. All of that has to be put in regardless of whether we have density of 4.4 or 4 or 8, or whether they're single, they're one acre lots and we have 105. And so then you're spreading that cost among 105 lots, or among 450 lots, or among 800 lots. And that's where the cost per acre lot goes up significantly. And that's one of the reasons why, especially if it begins in the city, a one acre lot is probably not financially feasible for most people to purchase. If we thought there was a market for that, and then the value of a house on a lot that size and a lot that cost is not then 150 to 300,000 dollars. The house then value is a 500 to 800,000 dollars. Doesn't mean there's not a market for some of those, there's just not a market for 150 or 200 of those, we don't think, in the next five, 10 years in Scott County. Again, doesn't mean they're not there, just that size market's not there. Matter of fact, I tell you, in Fayette County, they don't, that's not being done either. You know, the other thing is, if you do one acre lots, with this density at 4.4, again, you know, we asked for more, we didn't get it, but we understand that. Is if you, if you take that density down, that means some other farm has to come in and be rezoned and be annexed into the city probably, or, or some city, to add the density that's not being committed here. So if you were to say, if they, that request to make them one acre lots, that'd be 105 residential lots. You have 340 single family houses that has to be built somewhere else because of demand. Where's that going to be? And I'm, I don't know the answer to that, but that's, that's the tension between land use. And that's why you have a comprehensive plan. And that's why the comprehensive plan says, this needs to be city urban residential, R1C is appropriate. So in conclusion for that, is, you know, we think that under the statute cares 100 to 13, so whether it's conforming with the comprehensive plan and future land use map, we believe it is. I think we have a great team on this with Thirbred, Jeff, Reva, Jeremy and George, who've been here. And we've had, I mean, these have been, sort of went back in July with you all. You know, the, the process is quick, there were dozens of meetings with staff, the planning commission before we ever got this far. A lot of thought, a lot of changes made to hear what people said, to take that into consideration. That's a lot of information again tonight for you all. And I know many of your job, I have to try to absorb it all. I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you. Counsel have questions for Mr. Billings?
I do, actually. I know you were talking about the study and I've had different, you know, people approach me about it. And I know the traffic study is, you know, pretty, it's a prediction. You know, you try to base it on what's going on, but there's no way to exactly know. And a question that I had, and some people had brought up to me, was, you know, having this near five schools, you know, the largest high school in the state, Cardinal Academy, the eighth grade, Anne Mason, Royal Springs. And, and just that adding, you know, that many more homes and traffic there. Because I think the turn lanes are good, and I think, you know, you've really addressed that. And a lot of, you know, work has been put into that. But it's just people had approached me about the sheer volume of people. And have you all done any studies of the traffic going into town?
Well, let me see, what, at what location?
Well, coming from the development, you know, like say they go 25.
Yeah, so the traffic study looked at traffic.
Because that's unfortunately, you know, when you go into town and North Broadway's two lane and there's no way to make it four lane, you know?
Yeah. So we did study south of the 2532 intersection.
Okay, you didn't?
We did not.
Oh, okay.
But the study looked at data in two locations. One is it measured traffic along the blue line, which is along Cincinnati, going both north and south. And it measured all the traffic at this intersection, going straight, turning right, or turning left, through every different lane. And there's three different days, they did different studies to get that data. One was done at school, so we went back and did it at school, get the idea. So, but south of that, it was not measured.
That's a big.
On the north, it was. And that's one of the interesting conclusions, I think I said last time, was, you would think that one time a day, traffic would be going one way, and the other time of day, traffic would be going the other way. And that's not true here. It's both times a day, AM and PM peak, it's heavy going north, not coming south.
It's so hard to predict, you know, it really is. Schools in Toyota. And I think a lot of people drive, you know, there to go to Toyota.
And that could be, but you'd think they would also come back that way, but they must go a different route. Or their, or their time shifts are off. With respect to the schools, we actually think that's one of the good things about this development. Is would you rather have your density in schools, three or four miles from schools, where people have to be on the roads a lot more? Would you rather have your density near the schools, where they only have to drive a quarter mile to get the school drop where it's on?
I know the buses that go in and out.
Buses too. It's just, you think of a bus route, there's, you know, if you think of it, I understand this isn't the county, but think of a county bus route. I grew up in Ashland, Boyd County, and I remember that there were, and my wife grew up in Hyphal, and her bus, she's worse than me, was in, she got picked up at 7:05 in the morning for a drop off at school at eight. Now, that's not as bad here, I understand, but, but the example is, you want residential development as close to schools as you can get it? Because that's where the traffic's going.
Yeah, yeah. It'd be great if they could just walk across, but they can't.
Well, we, we're, we're open to that. If somebody has the ability to communicate at school, we, I think we said, we talked about that.
Yeah, you talked about that, yeah, you talked about that.
We're open to that. We still think there's an opportunity to do that, we just want to make sure that it's safe for the schools.
Well, and, and there have to be so many things signed off on too, you know, but yeah, but thank you.
Nathan, what was the traffic count that, do you recall, in front of the property?
On which time of day?
Not just on the daily, the daily count, how many cars per day or?
I don't remember that.
That's all right.
I don't, I don't remember with, there were three different studies done on different days, but this is the most recent one. I can, I can look in there, it took me minutes.
That's all right.
I want to say it like PM peak was 300 and some. Do you remember? Do you remember, Matt? I don't, I don't remember. One of us 300 and some at an hour at PM peak, which is pretty good to list.
You know, and the other, the other thing, Polly, to think about is about if it's going to take them two years to develop this out, I guess there'll probably be another, new high school.
There'll be more elementary.
And another, at least elementary and middle school.
Well, but the other thing too, is the Catholic school's going to Cardone.
That's right.
So they're gonna, so that's gonna be, that's gonna be in the next year. It's just a popular area where a lot of things are.
Benefit that school.
This is the area that, I hate to say you win because I don't know, but looking back through the comprehensive plan notes, that the city and the planning commission have said, we want our, our urban growth to go north along the road. I'm not here to settle whether that's right or the wrong policy decision. I'm just here to say that policy decision has been made, maybe it needs to change, maybe it doesn't. But that, that wasn't done just with a zone change. That was one of the emphasis behind the annexation of this property already, because that's where the policy matter, there's a direction to take, develop in order.
Any other questions from the council? Andrew, if you could, if you could help me walk through the options that the council has at this point. This, as I understand, this, this recommendation has come favorably from planning and zoning to the council. If the council takes no action or takes no majority action, it will automatically, the zone change will take effect in 90 days.
Which is first of February?
So council does not have to vote tonight, you have time if, if you choose to not vote tonight. Since the recommendation came to the council from planning and zoning in the affirmative, you, the council has the choice to approve the zone change. The council also has the opportunity to reject the zone change. As I understand it, since it has been a recommendation from planning and zoning, it would take five votes of the council to reject the zone change recommendation. And you would need to, if that were the case, you would need to either interpret the existing record in a way differently than planning and zoning interpreted, to reach different conclusions. Or you could reject all of the hearing documents and the analysis that planning and zoning has done, and hold your own hearings. It seems that the record is fairly complete. I guess I could first ask the council, is there any council member that finds the record lacking and feels the need to have additional public hearings to complete the record? Then, then I think it's probably time to have second reading of the ordinance and roll call vote. And then we'll see what action we have, and we'll respond accordingly to that action.
Mayor, can you make comments after the second reading or before?
You can make them any, now would be fine, if you'd like to.
Well, I said, one of the main questions I was asked about the road improvements, and knowing that they're going to build this before they ever start building the road improvements, that was the number one concern of a lot of the people in that area. And the way they laid it out is exactly how they said they want to do it, so. And they're paying for it, so that's going to be done first.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I make a quick comment as well? I assume anybody can. And if, if anyone, I know you just asked this, but if, if anyone on the council wants to table it, personally, I don't have a problem with waiting either. But I do think that Nathan has, has given us a lot of information. I think that the information certainly has changed since it went through or was presented to planning and zoning. And I do know that when, when we, we got word that it was coming to us, the information has become even more clear in the fact that there's not going to be any multifamily. And that the lots are going to be a minimum of 7,500 square feet. And the setback from US 25 is, is going to be, you know, more than adequate. The property is, it's in the comp plan, it's in comp plan for development. So that's kind of been determined. I guess at the end of the day, I, I feel much better at this stage with, with the public hearings that we've had and with the information, I guess, that they've provided. But I, I still say the same thing I just said. If anyone on the council is uncomfortable, there's no urgency, at least on my part, or probably anyone else's part, to take a vote tonight.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I can just add to both of those comments, I had two conversations, one on Friday and one on Sunday yesterday, with two members, two elected officials that work in Frankfurt, specifically about the intersection there at 25 and Champion. And I know, I, I feel really confident that there's going to be improvements made there. I really do. I believe that. I know there's several projects right now that are, I guess, that are being looked at, worked on at the present time, including the bypass. And also, the final leg of the bypass, obviously, is a, is a major item. Not that this is not. And then the other item right now that's being worked on is the, out on 460, right in front of Elkhorn Crossing School there, with the widening of the road. So I feel confident, I really do, that improvements are coming. I don't know when, I can't give you a timeframe, but I feel com, I really feel confident that it's, it's going to happen. Sooner rather than later. And, and that's important, because that, that is a, it's a busy intersection. And, and the traffic, just as Marvin stated earlier, I mean, the commitment to fix the entrance, the, you know, the, the road improvements there just in front of the entrance of this proposed subdivision, before the first house even gets built, that, that's, that's important. And I would hope, along with that, just as important, is proper lighting. I know that's been an item we've talked about for several years, all throughout this city. So as David stated, you know, if somebody wants to make the motion to table, I, I'm, I'm okay with that. But I feel confident that the road improvements are coming. I really do. If I didn't, I would have a lot of concern right now. But I, I feel confident that it's coming. So, thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other comments from the council?
I guess my concern, that just that's been brought up to me and that I had it verified, that no study has been done past 32 going into town. Because that's really such a bad area driving in. And I think, you know, the thing with traffic studies, I, I realize where they come from, but you cannot predict what drivers are going to do, and you can't tell them what to do either. And I, you know, if this was on a four lane bypass, I wouldn't have any trouble with it at all. But just two lanes, you know, I, you know, I mean, people have just come to me worried about it. And I do, you know, and I know with the road improvements, hopefully it will happen. But I have just been told over and over and over that certain things can't be done because there's no money. Over and over and over. And I hope road improvements will happen, but there is no guarantee.
To which, just want to clarify, which, we know the road improvements in front of this development.
Oh, we know that's going to happen. Oh, I know that's going to happen. We know that's going, I'm talking about the state. You know, is the state going to add anymore? But no, no, I know that's going to happen. And I think that's good with the turn lanes, but going into town and just being such a high density traffic area, you know, and I just, I wish it were somewhere else. If it were somewhere else, I wouldn't have a problem, but, not that I wouldn't have a problem, but just the feedback that I've received.
I've gotten a lot of concerns from people that live in Stonehedge that have approached me and their traffic, the traffic situations, they've really, really bothered by it. And those five schools and all that are in the Cardone situation, where the kids will be starting to school there. Same thing, I wish it had four lanes, two each way, be a lot safer. And that's a concern.
Would. I hope that we don't reach a conclusion that there can never be development past Stonehedge.
I'm not saying that, I'm saying the road situation and conditions is what I'm more focused on. Not that we'll never put a house out there, you know, that's not what I meant.
Okay. Any other comments? Shall we have second reading of the ordinance, then we'll see where we go from there?
An ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property containing 122.2 acres located at 1341 Cincinnati Road, Georgetown, Kentucky, from A1 to R1C, PUD and C1 conservation. Summary, amends the official Georgia. Summary, amends the official Georgetown Scott County zoning map to show a change in the zoning classification for certain real property consisting of a total of 122.2 acres located at 1341 Cincinnati Road, Georgetown Scott County, Kentucky, from A1 agriculture to R1C, PUD, low-density residential and C1 conservation, provides for several built-to-repeal of inconsistent ordinances and ineffective date upon passage and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in City Clerk's Office, 100 North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky 40324, or at www georgetown ky.gov. Introduced and fully read the first time November 27, 2017. Publicly read second time December 11, 2017.
Thank you. That represents second reading of the ordinance. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll make the motion, Mayor, to see whether it passes or not.
Thank you. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second if you can take the vote.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Opportunity for comment or we will call the roll?
I'm having an issue with the fact that planning and zoning have done their job and that it's in the comprehensive plan. They've got it, they've said that they would do R1C. They've done improvements to the road and they're going to have the turn lanes and stuff. So if it doesn't pass, then we're going to have to have reading, a whole new, start all over and have our own proceedings? Is that my understanding?
I think if, if.
We have to find something different than planning and zoning.
If this vote does not pass, then the zone change would still be on a path to occur. Unless the council, if this vote is negative, then someone would have to make a motion to reject the Planning Commission's recommendation and explain in their motion the reasons why they're doing that, from information in the record. And then five council members would have to vote in favor of that rejection to stop the zone change.
I think it's fair to say it's probably a whole lot more complicated than that, but that's it in a nutshell.
That's the ABC version. So, shall we call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
And Mrs. Butcher-Cromway?
No.
Mrs. Singer-Erdley?
No.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Mrs. Single-Sanes?
No.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes five to three. That zone change is complete. If we could now shift gears to the second reading of the Pleasant Valley Zone Change Ordinance. On the public sign-in sheet, if I'm reading through this correctly. Ms. Fannin?
Good evening, Mr. May, I'm Councilor. My name is Ms. Fannin. I'm president of the Cherry Blossom Village homeowners association. And when we bought our homes in Cherry Blossom, as many of the surrounding area, we ran an impression that the Pleasant Valley area would be all single-family homes as well as 74. The original plan that the urban group presented was for 46 to 50 homes on 10.26 acres. And now they say they're going to use 16.299 acres. And we realize that they're willing to donate some property for Lexus Way to go through, which is another issue. But our question came from a homeowner that wanted to know why they couldn't put the 46 to 50 homes on the 16.299 acres. How much are they donating? How much of the 16 acres will they be donating? So that was the question. And then they asked the question, wanted the planning and zoning recommend 82 townhomes versus the 46 to 50 single-family homes. We are already hosed by Toyota traffic and many of us out there are Toyota owners. I've got my seventh one in about 30 years. So we're not anti-Toyota anything, but we do contend with that traffic on a daily basis. It is horrendous. And we realize that these people coming out of Snyder Boulevard are probably not going to go out on Cherry Blossom Way and do anything. We're going to cut right down Oxford Road and blow right through that four-way stop sign like everybody else does. And go out to the Connector Road, which is another nightmare. And so our position is that we would like to respectfully ask that be retained as a single-family dwelling place. And I just wanted to go on record, I promised to have a come and say the piece for them because we realize we're going to have more traffic. It's not the fact that they're going to build there, it's just the congestion of it. We don't see how 82 townhomes versus 50 single-family homes and eventually 170 townhomes. Because our understanding, Lexus Way would go out of Old Oxford Road, which is going to be improved, is my understanding?
It is a dream, Madam President.
Okay, it's a dream. But until that time, which I understand is years away, we're going to be contending with a lot more traffic there. So we felt that single-family homes, and that's the community we bought into on a golf course, and that's really the way we would like to see it stay. So I just wanted to go on record to say that. And thank you, by the way, for moving with no emergency signs. I wanted to come publicly, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fannin.
Mayor, can Andrew or you maybe answer a couple of the questions that she just, she just asked?
Yes, or with Nathan's.
Well, yeah, or Nathan or whomever, but I mean, I don't know whatever you think the best timing is, but she had a few questions and I think it'd be good to get.
Sure. I'm not, and Nathan might be able to help me here because I'm not sure of the exact sequence that some of these things happened in this deliberation. We became aware, as we've discussed at length in these council meetings and also in our joint meeting with Scott County Fiscal Court, that we think we've got some fairly significant road improvements that we need to make in that area of town. And we acknowledge that, we've publicly acknowledged that Old Oxford Pike is not in the condition we would like to see it in. And it concerns me even today, the number of subdivisions that enter, enter out on the Old Oxford Pike, given the fact that decades ago it was a substandard county road and we simply annexed it. So it hadn't changed a lot. We do have intentions and we have done an engineering study, Ms. Fannin, and we do have detailed estimates on on our effort to rebuild Old Oxford. I think we cause some unnecessary fear in some of your close-by neighbors on Old Oxford by calling it a widening. We actually intend to rebuild the two-lane road that is there in a more proper configuration, not a large widening that's going to substantially encroach on adjoining property owners. But we do think that road needs to rebuild, be built to current standards. That's where the shoulders aren't as crumbling and you can drive safely down one lane without worries about crossing to the other lane of traffic. The other thing we wanted to do was eliminate some of the roller coaster characteristics of Old Oxford. I mean, it's really pronounced in this regard and we think that adds to a safety issue. So the engineering estimates that we've gotten have shown lopping off some of the hills, filling in some of the valleys, so we have a more gently undulating road that would be appropriate for that part of our city. In examining that and looking at the map, the thing that just jumps off the map at us is the benefit of an eight-tenths of a mile extension of Lexus Way for one country block to go from Cherry Blossom down to Old Oxford. And I know that some folks have concern about that road. The beauty of that potential connection is that today, you're correct, almost everyone on Old Oxford has to come into the V, has to come into the congestion before they can make their proper turn and connection and go back out. We believe that if we can provide a significant relief valve by extending Lexus Way, much of that traffic on Old Oxford, instead of coming into town into the most heavily congested part, can simply go to Lexus Way and in eight-tenths of a mile access a four-lane Cherry Blossom and I-75. So we think those have been key improvements and we've gone so far as to have a joint meeting with the fiscal court to talk about potential funding of that road and how we might do that. When I talk about, we dream of getting that road done. It's not just a, I don't think it's a pipe dream. We've had the engineering done. We know what the costs are and we're seeking partners to help us pay for that. But as we look to preserve the corridor that we would use for an extension of Lexus Way, the current owners of this property do have current zoning for single-family homes. They could go out there tomorrow and start building those roads and putting in infrastructure and building, and ask for building permits for houses. I've simply told them that wouldn't probably be in their best interest because we intend to build a road through there. And we think the public benefit of that road is so great that it, it requires that strip of road, that right-of-way be preserved for our ultimate use. The owners of the property, when they first approached to me, were, I don't know if they had an interest in multifamily homes prior to that point or not. But it became aware, it became evident quickly that our plans to build a road significantly impacted their ability to develop their property. We took out about half of the units that could have been built to a single family. They indicated they were going to seek different zoning to re-achieve some of the density, some of the units that they had lost to our intention to build a road. And my comment to them was simply, it was very straightforward. I don't do planning and zoning. Planning and zoning commission does that and they make recommendations to the Georgetown City Council. I don't even break a tie on zoning issues. I don't have a vote in this matter. So I had to tell the owners point-blank, I can't help you with planning and zoning. Whatever you do there has got to be part of the public process. But it is my obligation to tell you, we intend to build a road through your property. That's my job to do and I've delivered that message. And they then have made the application that they've made. It's gone through planning and zoning, I think with a favorable recommendation. And the decision that the council has tonight or when they choose to take up this vote, since it doesn't have to be tonight, the council's choice is to vote yes or no. That, that seems deceptively simple, but that's exactly where we are. I hope that answers your question. It's as much information as I have.
Well, I do have one other question.
Yes, ma'am.
If you could come back up there.
Please.
How many acres are they donating? That was the question that was posed to me. How many acres are they donating to the city to make Lexus Way?
I don't think donation is the right word, but.
I don't think donation's the right word. I haven't, I. I've simply told people where we're going to build a road. I haven't discussed the way we'll acquire the property. I don't know if this is being.
I'm reading our new staff report. So the applicant is willing to donate right-of-way for a possible extension.
That's, that's great to know. If they're willing to dedicate right-of-way, as I understand it, the right-of-way that we would require for a road like this would be 90 feet. So whatever acreage that works out, I haven't done that math. I don't know.
And how long is the road going to be? Joe, do you know?
It's about one and a half acres.
Okay, so they were able to put 46 to 50 homes on 10.26. And if they donate one and a half acres out of 16, why can't they not put 46 to 50 homes on 14.10?
I can't answer.
That was the question posed to me.
Yes, ma'am.
And this didn't come up at the planning commission, it didn't come up at your first reading because no one was here.
Yes, ma'am.
But that was posed to me and I said, no, go ask.
Well, and I can't answer that question for you. We. The council and the fiscal court for decades have assigned to the Planning and Zoning Commission the responsibility of being the fact-finding body for both city and county government to do the public hearings and put together the record for these issues because they have the staff to do it and that they focus on just that responsibility. So other than other than hearing that recommendation come to us, and I'm, it's my impression from talking with the city attorney that our choice is to vote up or down the application that has been brought to us. I don't even think we're in a position to arbitrarily change zoning classifications if it's not done as a part of an applicant's application. So perhaps Mr. Billings or one of the owners could help answer that question, but I'm unable to.
Pat, while you're up there, the other question that she mentioned and I think if maybe Andrew or Joe could answer, but how do you, how do you come up with 82 versus roughly 50 homes? And I know there's a formula involved, but maybe Joe or someone can, or Mayor or you or Andrew can explain that.
And my understanding is, and I could be wrong, I'm just, I'm just kind of going with common sense here, is that when you have a single-family home, there's an assumption of the number of people that will live there in consequence of the number of vehicles. And when you translate that over into a townhome, the number of people there is a smaller number, so therefore the units per acre, it doesn't equal to the, it doesn't equal out.
Right. So the traffic count should be the same, whether they're single-family or the townhomes, essentially.
I think that's right from the traffic impact analysis, according to what was in the recommendation from staff.
Does that make sense? Like, I'm sure it does.
It's a computation, I mean, they would know how to do it.
Yeah, yeah, but the other.
Eighty-two equals 50, I suppose. That's the new math, right?
Well, the other. I don't know if you're being malicious.
Why are we ever on Jeopardy to make 82 townhomes equal 50 single-family homes? You were mentioning Old Oxford Road. I'm talking about Oxford Road that goes down by Applebee's. That is the raceway for all the Toyota workers and you're making the assumption all the Toyota workers are going to go out and go out Lexus Way and go down Old Oxford Road. That is a broad assumption because I'm guaranteeing you probably not.
No, I don't.
And the 82 townhomes are going to come down and turn left on Oxford because all the businesses and the restaurants are down there off Connector and off of Champion, or off of, by Champion Way and by Cherry Blossom. So they're going to come out and make that left-hand turn and come down that road again.
Yes, ma'am, and we'll have another lovely conversation when we talk about the development plan for the huge tract of ground next to the old Golden Corral.
Yeah.
And that will, that will.
Merry Christmas.
And a happy new year.
Ms. Fannin, it's the gift that keeps on giving.
You're kind of closing Cherry Blossom in. We're getting claustrophobic in there, so.
Part of the difficulty as we, and we are spending a lot of time around conference tables looking at maps and where road improvements are necessary. And part of the reality that we'll see graphically on presentations about the planet fitness and the other development that will occur on Blossom Park Drive is that that large vacant track has sat there zoned for 17 years.
Commercial.
During that time, Cherry Blossom and every other subdivision has developed all the way around it. Cherry Blossom and its developer contributed zero to road improvements for Old Oxford Road. Nada. And now the last person standing is this commercial tract of ground. And there seems to be an expectation that the last man standing pay for every bit of public improvement that's now required. Previous councils have approved zone changes all in that area, including Cherry Blossom, knowing that this commercial track was there. knowing that this commercial track was there. So we share in these issues, Ms. Fannin. We all share in them.
Are we talking about that tonight, or are we talking about Pleasant Valley?
No.
That's not on the agenda tonight.
Yeah.
That comes later to us?
That will come later to you. I'm just saying, yes, we have significant road improvements in this area. And we've all got skin in that game.
But sir, may I say that the developer did put a fence up on Oxford Road and we do maintain the cutting of the grass there. We cut all that grass and keep it looking nice over on that end of town.
Oh, and those visual improvements, we deeply appreciate because we don't have the staff to do it.
Right.
But, but it is true that there have been no developer funds set aside to help us with Old Oxford Road. And that has been our error. And it's one we intend to correct going forward.
Did you get the money for Ichabana? Did they give you that money?
Yeah.
A developer of another development contributed $100,000 and we spent that on building Ichabana.
Right.
So just, just say, we have significant issues on Oxford, Old Oxford, and frankly, that track that we'll hear about later, planning commission has asked them to make offsite improvements that it is impossible for the developer to make. They've asked for a stoplight that District 7 has flatly refused to put in. And planning and zoning commission has insisted on a right in, right out of Oxford. The only people that can do a right in, right out of Oxford is this council. And I'm not sure how that boat will go. We'd have to get that from the traffic committee, but...
Pleasant Valley.
We've talked about it.
We've been thinking of that.
Yeah. So, but thank you, Ms. Fannin. I appreciate you being here tonight. We missed you at the last one.
Appreciate you all, too.
Yes, ma'am. Nathan, I know that council has expressed real concern about the appearance of what's being proposed. And I think Mr. Lesby and perhaps other council members ask if you could, from the existing record, give the council any indication about what this might be. Is there anything that, I know that all we can do tonight is either approve or disapprove of zone change.
Were there any other public comments on Pleasant Valley?
That was the only person that had signed up for public comment.
Anyone else who had comments would have had a chance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and Council. So again, I have a presentation I'll go through briefly. From the comments, from the comments at the last hearing, we took those. Mr. Lesby, you suggested that, you know, we spend some money and some designing. And so we actually had a picture of the townhouse from before that was small. We passed it around as black and white and I printed two of pages so that you'll see the presentation. So what we've done is taken what our concepts were before and put them on color blowups, also having the slides. If you all need to pass this around, y'all see some close-ups of them, or you can lay them up here. And we have a couple of different iterations of different views of them, so to speak. And I'm not sure how you want me to handle this.
I want the council to see them and I want the audience to see them. So just flip them through.
Describe what we're looking at, if you don't care.
I've got the, there's a quarter I'll go through a minute.
And then maybe after we're finished, we could again line these up so that the public can at least see the graphics.
So again, here's the site of the land. It's an acinet, pentagonal shape is pretty close to it. I just graphed it, I just drew, you know, used PowerPoint or sort of red line there. That's not probably the exact specific location of proposed Lexus Way because there's some engineering that will have to be designed in it. But that gives you context for what this sort of precipitated is. And that would be on the north side of Cherry Blossom Golf Course, on the north side of, I think it says Cherry Hill?
Cherry Hill.
Then on the south side of the proposed Pleasant Valley area we're talking about. So the current property, it is currently zoned, as you all know from the first hearing. We have an R1C over there now, which is, you know, from the different hearing a second ago, it's 4.4 units per acre. There is a preliminary subdivision platform that is approved. Not only is it ready to commence construction, but we have commenced construction. We have started clearing and grubbing the land. We have removed honeysuckle, trees that would be in roadways to allow us to start putting sewer in. We have not commenced improvements that would, are based upon whether the single family or multifamily, or single family, basically that has done the work now that regardless of the output tonight, it's ready to do the work on, if that makes sense. And one of the reasons why is we have a site contractor who's doing work on the other area of Pleasant Valley and just made economic sense since they were out there to go ahead and have a clear part of the land and start moving some of the dirt that's going to have to be removed regardless of what we do. And that is correct, it is for 50 single family lots. Specifically, here is the current preliminary subdivision plan. This is approved in 2005. I'm not sure when you bought your house in Cherry Blossom, Ms. Fannin.
I was in 2011.
So, you know, if you bought in 2011, this would be a development plan that it was replaced in. If somebody promised you that it would be single family homes, I'm certainly sorry that they promised something that no one could guarantee. But that was the approved development plan, R1C, which is single family homes. The area outlined in green here is actually called, see, it's called Section 2. That means that this backside of Pleasant Valley, sort of the end of it, is all Section 2. And inside of Section 2, you have different phases. And this outlined in green is Phase 3. It's the last one in Pleasant Valley to be built out. It does have a proposed connection road, Snyder to come through here. Again, I wish the laser pointer worked on there, but... So that area in green is 16 acres. You'll notice here that where the lots are, I've got one more that's a little bit closer. The way the lots are laid up, this 90-foot area that we are going to set aside for future road expansion, basically encroaches on and takes these lots. Now, first thing is, Ms. Fannin, your house backs up to the golf course?
Yes, it does.
Are there any houses in Cherry Blossom that don't back up to the golf course?
Yes, there are.
And the ones that back to the golf course are typically valued higher than those that don't back up to the golf course, would you agree? So in the same way, these lots that are back, are planned to back up to the golf course have a premium in value to them. So the approximately 15 lots that are adjacent to or nearly adjacent to the golf course, the most valuable lots essentially of Pleasant Valley, will, would be taken away by a condemnation action by the city. Which means that instead of having lots that are over 35 or 40, you can have lots that are with 50 or 60 or 65, because they back up to recreational golf space, recreational golf course that add significant value to those homeowners. And understandably, they would be looking at a golf course, not a road. So then you take the road and then you have single family homes backing up to a 90-foot, possibly four lane access road for Lexus Way extension across. Not only does that then produce the size of the development, but you'll see over here, one of the problems is we have a significant, this line from here to here is a huge drainage area. It's actually a creek that basically runs almost all year long from a spring on a farm sort of down in this area, it's actually over here, sort of runs back through there. And there's floodplain there. So it severely limits, although it's 16 acres, the amount of buildable space in 16 acres. We can still create green space, we can still create common space, you can still parking lots, but you can't put residential structures inside of that area. Additionally, there's a KU easement that runs through there that I think is 100 foot long. So there's a lot of, on the 16 acres, there's a couple of site constraints for natural features, there's site constraints for utility easements, and then of course, what was envisioned as houses backing up the golf course would no longer be a possibility. So I think one of the questions that Ms. Fannin had was, well, why can't they just go ahead and do more houses on the line? Well, because it wouldn't work on 16 acres. Could we redesign it to maybe compact the lots? Possibly. You'll see over here on this side, you'll see some really long narrow lots because we have to have streets that come in to redesign it. At the end of the day, it's very clear that we're going to lose 10 to 15 lots that are valuable because they back up to the golf course. And we're going to lose, we estimate about another five to really have good design, road designs, because there's really only one way in of this subdivision. And if it connected through over here, there might be two. If it connects through, we lose additional lots. And that's one of the things that although it's not our proposal, we actually believe not part of the zone change. But what we think is appropriate is where Schneider comes in here, that there actually needs to be a connection to Lexus Way here. Instead of having people in Pleasant Valley go all the way up to the front or come all the way through Old Oxford, we actually build a connector road to Lexus Way at this point, too. Because then it allows some of the traffic congestion inside of Pleasant Valley for people who are complaining about traffic, allows it to access directly out, if that makes sense. Again, that's a design element that's not in the old plan, it's not even in our current one, but that's one of the things that we've thought through. There needs to be a connection there. And our townhome proposal originally had that connection in a different location. So currently, we said we eliminate at least 20 of the current lots. You know, we think those lots would vary between 40 to 150,000. I don't know what a golf course lot, but there are two or three very big wide angled lots backing up the golf course. And Cherry Blossom gets a premium on those lots. And we think that there's an opportunity here that but for the potential Lexus Way extension, those lots can also get that premium. Of course, if there was a condemnation action by the city, those lots would have to be purchased through the condemnation proceeding. There's an evaluation process, a litigation process that happens with that, which is really not for discussion tonight, just there's a process that handles it. The site statistics we have are, while again, it is 16.3 acres gross, it's really only 14 acres net. And that's, and that is, when you look at the roadways, when you actually back out the green space and the floodplain, it's actually less than 14 acres. But it is 14 acres net. We're proposing 170 townhouses on there. That would allow the density of 11.97, which is 12 units per acre, what we're suggesting. I don't know that we'll ever be able to get 170 on here. I don't know if the road configuration we would have in doing the extension from Schneider Boulevard across to access Lexus Way, that we would ever be able to actually have 170 units. I don't think that's possible, but that's what the zoning would permit if it could be built upon there. The way we've done our building fit up, we've drawn buildings with a number of units. When you actually look at those buildings, they probably aren't going to support those number of units. So I don't want to misrepresent something to say we're going to do less than 11.97. I'm just telling you that it's going to be practically very challenging for us to be able to accomplish the maximum density. We originally applied for an R3, which allowed 18 units per acre. It was for apartments and townhomes. Very clearly, the owners of both Cherry Blossom and Pleasant Valley and planning staff said we don't want to do apartments in that level density out here, and we backed off that. What was not present in the initial application, which is the developer, the original application only included the line to the floodplain line right here, or to the easement line. And so it missed out on all of the acreage in these lots over here in the green. And when I was hired in, it was just inadvertent. I said, look, all of Phase 3 actually comes all the way to this line over here. We need to include that, otherwise we're going to have this parcel of land that zoned something, it's a leftover remnant, it's got to be part of the development plan, we're going to have to deal with it. So either it was going to be inadvertently omitted before and we're going to have to clean something up later on. So when I got involved, I said, we're just going to redo and capture all of Phase 3 so that it makes sense now.
Do you think that's where the 10 acres came from that Ms. Fannin referenced earlier?
I'm not sure that I understood her question, sir.
Well, it was one of your first proposals, Nathan. You had 10.26 acres.
Oh, that, well, that's what, so yes, that's where the 10 acres came from. That's what, when she said 10 acres, I wasn't sure what she was saying. The original application had, to this line here was about, was over 10 acres. But if that's what she's referring to, yes, that's why it was based on 10 acres, because it didn't include the area between this line here and the edge here. And you'll see down here, there's five, one, two, three, there's four lots there. It's part of that that we're, again, inadvertent. So what our proposal is, and this is again, the concept plan, and here is the blowup of it, if you want to pass it around. Y'all have seen this before as part of the application process. This is where Schneider comes down, this is where proposed Lexus Way would be. Excuse me, a change that is not on here, but we think makes design sense, is that there be a connector between Schneider and here, probably along this property boundary line. We have suggested in here, connection here and here for the existing townhome community. But as we thought about it, we said, if it doesn't make sense for single family traffic from Pleasant Valley to be driving through the townhouse community to access 2 points on Lexus Way, that seems to be a potential issue for pedestrian safety, kids on bikes, parking. So we'll have to do some redesign of this. And that redesign is what I said, reduces probably the number of units we're going to be able to construct. And then along this boundary here would be that connector road, and then our townhouse community would be connected off of that sometime. There's a blowup of that so you can see what it sort of looks like. Again, you'll see our access point here and here is proposed, which would be removed, and that this would all be closed off at this point with a connector here. Again, that'd have to be engineered, have to be constructed, because there are public roads on our property that are designed those, and we have to construct them and we have to dedicate them to the city. So both with the corner of Schneider, back up in this corner, the Schneider connection, as well as the extension we would do over Lexus Way, those would be developer pay for improvements. We're not doing Lexus Way. That, that property, I know that's my play, but we're not doing Lexus Way. But the land is going to be set aside for the donation for that, understanding that the city wants to do it. It seems to be a good and wise decision as a developer and a member of this community. There's a lot of questions asked about our concept. Now, let me be, I want to be candid. Pleasant Valley is a community of single family homes that is built with vinyl siding. Cherry Blossom has houses with vinyl siding. A lot of houses in Georgetown have vinyl siding. The reason is because vinyl is exactly right, is an inexpensive but inferior building product. You can go up from there with things like concrete board or hardy board or wood siding, and you can go up to there with brick or things like, or brick veneer. Nobody builds true brick anymore, it's all brick veneer. The planning commission, we had, this is a drawing, we changed the colors on the doors of this drawing, which is all brick in our front doors. You'll see our gable windows, the gables on our front. So what we did is with those questions, these would be the fronts that face interior to the inside parking lots. That is a proposed view of the rears with, wraps the brick around the sides. You'll see partitions, it's separate patios, French doors, landscaping package. Now, this is what the back of them would look like. The fronts are not going to face Lexus Way, the back would. I don't know what we would ultimately build if we were allowed to build the 50 single family homes. Again, there's 10 or 12 lots that back up to the golf course that we would build to the level that the market would allow. But if it was consistent with what Pleasant Valley had, and if it was consistent on what some of the homes in Cherry Blossom, they could have vinyl today. Because that's what is consistent in Pleasant Valley and that's what other houses have. Now, the market may say, hey, they want brick or stucco or something else, so it could be done. But I want to say that this design concept is much higher than what I would call is the prevailing architectural standard for Pleasant Valley. It's that it costs significantly more than other construction practices being done in Pleasant Valley. There's also, this is a, was called a rear section, so if you were to stand on Lexus Way and sort of look down the back of the houses, this would be... The rear section is sort of a cut through that shows a slight berm between the roadway, you see the 90-foot roadway. You'll see your property line is your PL. You see a berm, your setbacks, which are the local subdivision regulations for setbacks for housing. And then the back of your townhouses, you can sort of plainly see the privacy fence So I know there was a lot of discussion about that. Mr. Lesby, does that help give you sort of better...
I think it does. I think it helps a lot. Yeah, I certainly appreciate you.
So here's the downside of these. When you start building in brick, your density doesn't increase if your construction costs go up significantly. And the amount you're going to sell townhouses for doesn't increase commensurate with the cost of construction anyways. What that means is there's effectively, there's less margin on each townhouse you build. Is that a lot? I don't know, but there is a difference there. Then finally, the legal standard is similar to what we talked about before for zone change. One of the, I think, the... One of the, I think, the way I perceive this, which doesn't mean it's correct, is that the R2 may not be consistent with the existing neighborhoods and areas. Here is what I wanted to point out, is that the R2 is consistent with the future landuse map. So this is, of course, we saw a similar map like this earlier, so this over here is the property, with the red arrow pointing to it. What you'll see is it's urban residential. Urban residential is R1, R2s and R3s. And R2 is within the urban residential category, so the future landuse map anticipates this type of zoning inside of here. There's additional information in your packets that was presented at the, that was presented at the planning commission regarding the comprehensive plans, goals, and objectives. I'm not going to go back through each of those, if you want to see that presentation. Again, I have a copy I can give to you, as well as economic changes. We made a presentation on the economic changes that have happened since 2005 in Georgetown, growing, cost of construction, density, wanting to preserve the urban service boundary. That's just a quick bullet point summary. I'm sure you all read the presentation, it's on, we have four or five slides, maybe even six on the economic changes. So Cherry Blossom considerations. Having moderated a probably two, two-and-a-half hour meeting at Cherry Blossom one night, we invited Pleasant Valley residents, we invited the Cherry Blossom residents, probably 60, 80 people there. Clubhouse was very generous to let us rent that for a night, and Luther was very, you know, with open lips, he didn't want out, he was great to work with. The first one is, because of the buffer that's going to be created with the 90-foot setback, we don't actually believe that you can see these proposed townhomes from any existing residential in Cherry Blossom. And there's a couple of reasons for that. One is, if you're going to look at the topography, and I've got a map for you in a second, the actual land here rises 50 feet from the nearest residential lot to the top of the golf course, and then starts to come back down. Well, while you may be able to see a trajectory over the 50-foot, the best you'd be able to see is perhaps the top of the roof lines, but we think that with the setback of Lexus Way, they're not likely to see any of this development at all. The 90-foot right away will separate the townhomes, and then of course, we'll have the landscape buffer, and I've got here an example of a landscaping plan that shows a view from the golf course across a distance of Lexus Way. In other words, the buildings are scaled to accommodate that distance with the landscaping buffer. So here is the area for Cherry Blossom, it's probably hard to see on here, but you see contours, you see 850 to 900 feet, it raises up about 50 feet from, I forget the name of that, it was Cherry...
Hill.
Hill, thank you. And the rest of Cherry Blossom. Here is looking at the golf course, so this shot is taken sort of up in, up where the top arrow is, looking back down this way, and you'll see the land is sort of rolls and then slopes down. Another one, this is the houses in this point here, looking up towards the barn toward there, and you'll see, it sort of rises up. That is the Pleasant Valley over the, over farther to the northeast, the townhome area would be straight to the top of the screen here. That's another picture, that just shows how the land rises and falls. Similar, similar. Again, you'll see, just, the topography of the land isn't like these are going to go butt next to Cherry Blossom residents. There are significant distances over the golf course, there's a significant distance created by Cherry Blossom, there's a significant rise and fall of the geography. So this is an example of, on the golf course, looking at where the development would be. So you'll see, at that point, that's about the only location you'd be able to see these And, and so, this view, I did put my slide, is the one that's being passed around there, will show you the townhouses, what they actually look like from this view. We think it's a good product, we think that there are, instead of houses literally being right at this fence line, which is what the current proposal, the current development plan would allow, there's another 90-foot road plus the setbacks created. So, I sort of went through the slides at the end, just to show the topography pretty quickly. But we think that the zone change is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The staff suggested that because of traffic reasons, we should only be able to build 82 units until the connection, the second connection is made, that we, we agree with that process. We can rule a different number, but at the end of the day, the planning commission said 82, and we agreed to comply with that. Did that answer your questions from the first time? There's a lot, again, a lot of data to throw at you all really quickly, from the first hearing, but hopefully it's helpful.
Each townhouse will be solid brick, correct?
That's correct, that's what the plan to do.
Front, back, sides.
That's all three of those, that's correct. I didn't do the side elevation, because they're side. Yeah, I mean, there may be gutters, or soffits, or eyebrows that have to be done that way.
99% brick.
That's correct.
Nathan, what about the parking? The way it was explained to me, there wouldn't be any parking, there'd be really scene from Lexus Way or the golf course, it'd be mostly self-contained, kind of on the inside of the project?
Yeah, it will all be self-contained inside the project, so, that's the site plan. So right here is the site plan. You'll see, for example, you have 20-foot setback, you have units across that would face, which we showed you all, the fronts would be on the inside, and then you have the parking along the inside. And those are parking requirements that we have to meet for every bedroom. There's a parking guideline, I think it's 0.9 per bedroom. It's no theory, but...
No, it depends on the number of bedrooms in each unit, so it's either one and a half or two and a half bedroom or parking spaces per unit.
So, in most of these will either be three or four bedroom units. But again, that's just what I said earlier with the density, although it may allow up to 12 units per acre. Once we add the connection road, and we add the parking that's going to require for the bedrooms, I don't see how we're going to actually be able to maximize out the density. But they would be interior. We think, too, councilwoman, that that's why getting rid of this little access point and this access point is a better option for the neighbors, instead of just having one access point. I think there's a concern from Cherry Blossom that this is going to create a lot more traffic inside their development, which is not true. There may be some created on ancillary roads like Old Oxford or Oxford. With Lexus Way, we think that will help funnel the traffic east, or sort of northwest and southeast, to four-lane roads that can handle the traffic, rather than on two-lane country roads.
You know, I'm going to say I'm not in favor of this at all. The last project that you brought, I actually, I know I voted against it, but I was actually torn on it, too. This one, since it was brought to me on day one, not in favor of it for multi-reasons. One, it's because I have seen, been around here too long to see home areas developed as one-way, and then after people have moved in, and you said it, you have no expectations. I've learned something over the years, don't buy your home until it's completely built out and nothing else can be built, and then you know what you're going to get. But I think it's wrong to the people that are in front to now have these townhouses, as nice as they are, I think it's wrong for them to have them in the back. You've got two other properties now that butt up against it, that are in the city limits, that are, right now, zoned for a single-family residence. So with you all doing that, I think it might encourage them to change theirs, and I think Georgetown has enough apartments and townhouses starting to come along to take care of that need in the city. And then the traffic, because that is a country road that's out there, that never was improved, that should have been improved along the way, but we didn't do it. And Lexus Way, as the mayor said, is a dream to come about, is not here yet. So you're proposing to put that much pressure on what may or may not come, and then if it comes, of course, you're going to put more pressure on it if it comes. So there's, I am just not in favor of this at all. I mean, the townhouses that were built, that was behind Lowe's, I actually loved the way they were built, that they were contained, kind of by themselves, even though they have a country road, too, that they're coming in on, but...
It's about politics, is it?
Uh, no, that was...
It's called the mill.
The mills.
The mills.
Yeah, they've done that, so it's contained, it was their own development, it's contained within itself, it's not bumped out into somebody else's residential area, that that's not what they were expecting to have when they bought the property. And I know things change, because I anticipate 15 years from now, you're probably coming back and asking for apartments out on, on North 25, but you may or may not. But I am just not in favor...
I wonder if you're retired by that.
I will be, too. But nevertheless, I, it's, we've seen it time after time after time, that it happens, that it's going to be one thing, and even though the roads can't accommodate it real well, at least they're somewhat keeping up, and now we dump this many into it, and with the other property around it that's supposed to be a single-family resident, you're not only inflicting your, those views and those changes onto this development, and I'm not even talking about Cherry Blossom, I'm talking about the two that are future planned, that's coming next to it, that you're inflicting now, and new set views on that.
Development here to the north.
Yes.
Well, you know, that one, they just went through that process, too. They changed what they wanted to do, and it was permitted.
Well, we're...
It's Abbey Old Oxford.
Okay. Are we putting townhouses and apartments over there?
Yes.
See, what you've done.
It was permitted. So, and here's, now, Hunter, when we talk to this client's whole process, they would rather just do, build their 50 single-family lots.
I would, too.
But, we would, we have been, I mean, I think the mayor's recitation of the background was exactly correct with the discussion that happened, and so it was. Let's think through what we need to do to make this still the right way. You know, is the city willing to buy 20 golf course lots for Lexus Way? And that's a rhetorical question, it's not the answer to 99. We're trying to find a solution that's...
Right, right. Well, I understand your solution, and it's good that you're thinking that direction, but I am not in any form, shape, or fashion, because we're not there with Lexus Way. The mayor may say that is, but he also said it was a dream. And I know how long it takes us to do anything around here, those people, it could be 15 years before we got to it, so...
So is this a no?
I thought it was backup Y, so you'd know. It's a definite no.
Let me have counsel questions first, Ms. Fannin, then I'll be glad to call.
Oh, goodness.
Well, I do have a question, with what you've passed around with far as, you're saying you're going to do the brick, and, you know, you haven't even gone through the conceptual plan, or presented that to planning and zoning, but you're standing there saying that you're going to do that.
Yes, so planning and zoning doesn't have anything to do with the exterior shell. It is all about the site plan, which is the location of the buildings, the number of bedrooms of the buildings, the number of parking spots, where the roads are located, where the gutters are located, the sidewalks, common spaces. The planning and zoning process doesn't have anything to do with, with that. They don't, they're not, the system is not set up to...
Dictate...
That's correct.
How they're going to, what they're going to put in it.
I mean, all I can tell you is, we are very clearly, Councilman Bellesbi's comments last time, and so we sat down and said, "We've got to do this, like, this is just what's going to happen."
I guess I do have a question. So on it, you can, I mean, the developer, the builder could say they're going to do brick, but that's not really enforceable, right? Like, they could change the line later.
That's, that's correct.
Oh, see, that's my, that's my issue with a lot of this. And, again, it has nothing to do with you or your developer, it comes down to the laws in place.
That's correct. And that will misrepresent something to you, either.
Yeah, exactly, and you're not, and I appreciate that.
But I also will say this, that this client, they have a large zone change, it just passed a few minutes ago here. They have completed out a significant portion of Colony, they have built a number of single-family homes here, they have this project they will complete out, and this is not the only project on our radar in Scott County. As a matter of integrity and professional reputation, you and I know both very well, if they're not willing to do what we say we're going to do, there's a path that takes us to a very uncomfortable place, and a bad business place.
Speaking of Colony, that's not real, that's a, that's a good example you brought up, of where they started with different types of homes, and gotten into apartments and townhomes in the back, and it's, it's not a positive.
Well, what we didn't do, the apartments and townhouses, what I can tell you is, if the back side of Colony, there's property left over, there's a remnant that a bank had bought in foreclosure, and it sat vacant for almost 10 years. And the bank had to finish out some of the development issues because of, they hadn't held the bond on the property. But they bought those lots, they finished building the lots out, created the HOA, funded the HOA with a significant cash balance, created the infrastructure for the HOA, signs that didn't exist. I can't tell you about the rest of the colony, but I agree with you. But I'll say, that's one of the problems happens, is when you have a development that is parceled off among different developers, that's also what happens, versus having a single developer that owns and controls it all.
This isn't, has not this subdivision done that to some degree?
Yeah, we acquired this property here, except for those lots that are down in this area here, this here, which are called Phase 1, in the top sort of triangle area. All of those lots here in the center of this, Phase 2 and Phase 3, they had acquired, and they're building up the single-family homes in Phase 2 now. And that's why I think, in the construction phase of that, is what precipitated this sort of communications that led to this discussion on Phase 3.
Yeah, this project failed. You all bought it at a master commissioner's sale, and have kind of picked up the pieces and trying to complete the development. You know, I mean, obviously, I have been very involved. I was at the meeting that they held at the clubhouse, I've been with Pat Fannin, we've stood on the side of the green and looked out over the property, and I've been in meetings with these gentlemen a few times, and I've heard from countless people that are my neighbors, and I've got 300 neighbors, and they're all reaching out to me. And the main thing that I'm hearing is, is they want some level of protection, they want it to be first, they want it to be nice, very nice. And I think they heard that message, if not at the last meeting, they've heard it from other people other than me, that if they're going to do this project, and if they're going to be long-term committed to Georgetown and doing other projects, they've got to do it right. And they recognize that the homes that they took over in the Colony, that's not the demographic that they're going after here, they're going after a higher demographic here, they're going, they're putting the brick in, they're doing the additional landscaping, they're containing the parking, they're trying to do the things...
That we have to do.
That the, yeah, that the neighborhood and the community has asked them to do. I know we can't make them put brick on a house, that's not our, that's not our job. But they heard that message loud and clear. And, and I know, at this stage, I'm more of an advocate for this project, because I feel like there's a lot of benefits. I think the community wins if they do what they say they're going to do. And, and, and right now, I'm willing to give them that opportunity, unless somebody convinces me otherwise.
There's a yes, there's a no. Continue.
One, one thing that, that I have had an opportunity to, Andrew and I have talked about this at length, and Andrew and Kyle and I spent a bunch of time today looking at a, a change of opinion that I'm willing to discuss with the council, is, I'm, I'm really concerned about adding 82 units worth of traffic to Schneider Boulevard. And that is a given with the plan that we're looking at tonight. 82 more units of traffic on Schneider Boulevard. And we've had some pretty gut-wrenching stories from residents of Schneider Boulevard about their traffic concerns, and concerns about children darting between cars. Anybody that's come to the council asking about speed bumps, we've pushed back on, and said they're just, they're not a good practice. But we've done some research, and there's the concept of speed humps, which are very different than speed bumps. A speed hump is some 10 to 12 feet wide, they're painted, they're clearly visible. There would be signs beside where each of those speed humps went. What I've asked Robert and Kyle to look at is, if they were properly installed, would a snowplow blade float over a speed hump? Where we've always had concerns that snowplows would take out speed bumps. So, we've done a fair amount of quick research about speed humps, and how they might be applied to Schneider Boulevard. But, we also recognize that there will be people in other neighborhoods that wish to use the same traffic calming method. And that if we're going to consider allowing improvements like that in specific circumstances, we need to establish a process and a set of guidelines by which we would approve speed humps, the conditions under which we would approve, what, what we would want them to be constructed like, and some set of standards. I'm not ready for us to make a knee-jerk reaction and vote to do that on Schneider. But, we know that speed humps are effective mid-block, they're not good at near intersections, but they're good mid-block. There are ranges about how frequently they should, they should be. And we're willing to do that research and get more information about how we might utilize speed humps to lessen some of the concerns of Schneider Boulevard. But we'd want to bring that to you for careful consideration of what the guidelines might be before we pull the trigger on it. But if it's, if the council is receptive to that... But if it's, if the council is receptive to that idea, we'd be glad to work on that and bring it back to you. If you're concerned about it, or don't think it's a good idea, we, we won't waste the time to do that.
We, we have talked about it. I'm, I'm an advocate. I've seen it in, in other communities and in those neighborhoods. I've taken measurements of them, and we've talked about them. So, if you're willing to try a pilot program on Schneider or wherever, I, I'd certainly support that as well.
Absolutely.
You have to look into what, like, does, how much time does it slow down? Ambulance, how about an ambulance coming and going once they have a patient in it? You have to worry about the police, does it slow them down? Does it, the fire truck, I don't think so much, but the police, the, actually, the ambulance is one of the biggest considerations going over them. And then, the snow removal, I think you can still do the snow removal, but you have to consider that will also slow down snow removal as well with having them. And I do believe, if you do it in one place, then, we did do two of them over on College Street, Jackson Street, over on Jackson Street, but if you do them on one subdivision, you're going to do them in every subdivision in town, and then, it will, it will hinder the, our employees and the jobs that they have to do. But, they will slow traffic down.
I don't, well, if, if we, if we go.
Midway Street cut in recently, and the, they took them out recently, too.
If we go willy-nilly, I'm sure that'll happen. We don't intend to bring it back to you unless we have guidelines that give us some methodology of considering them. And we may elect not to do them then. This will be a council decision, but we're at least willing to do the research for you. We, we have checked specifically on safety vehicles, and those averages are out there. It adds 30 seconds, let's see, it's 30 seconds for fire trucks now?
About 10 per bump, or per how?
10 seconds per bump.
And about 15 seconds for, um.
For an ambulance.
Ambulance with a patient.
With a patient. So, yes, we, we know what those numbers are, and, and that will be calculated into our thinking. We, we don't intend to do this blindly.
For the question, though, about the, the 82 townhomes, this is, you know, this is what's, how staff came to this conclusion of 82, is that they looked at the I T E trip generation manual. It said 50 single-family, oh, 50 single-family dwellings, which we do today, generates 478.5 weekday trips. They then extrapolated that to say, where could we get the same number on townhomes? And 82 townhomes leads to 480.5 weekday trips. It's actually ends up at less AM peak at 82 townhomes. At 50 single-family, it's 38.5 AM peak trips, whereas townhomes for 82 is 36.08, so it's two and a half less. PM peak goes from 51 with 50 single-family to 42.6. So, not only is there an equivalent weekday total, but the AM and PM peaks actually drop at 82 townhouses. Now, at 170, it does increase, but that, but the condition that Planning Commission put on place says we can't do that until there's a second way out, which is why we believe, again, the connection between Schneider to here makes sense. Because it not just helps us, it actually helps the rest of Pleasant Valley.
True.
Still have to go out to the stop sign and very close subdivision. And that can happen before ballhomes connect their, their development to Schneider Way here. Because who knows when that'll be? It'll be, that'll be a year and a half or two years from now, is what I estimate.
If this passes tonight, when will, I think you might have mentioned this at the beginning of your presentation, but when will that first townhouse, when will construction begin on the first townhouse, if this passes tonight?
We have to go back with a development plan to the Planning Commission, which will probably take, I guess, is three months to four months is probably the high fare. Then we have to submit, after that's approved by the Planning Commission, we have to get construction plans approved. We're probably talking about, just practically with how busy engineers are in general right now, that's another 16 to 90 days, and then you start construction. And this, we would do most of our infrastructure first. I guess is moving as aggressively as we possibly could. We wouldn't apply for building permits until late fall. If it doesn't pass tonight, we'll, we'll be building permits tomorrow morning.
Mayor, as you stated, and then Mr. Lesby commented on, how long, how, how much time do you think it will take us to do the research on potential speed humps?
Oh, we can, that, that, we can bring that back at the next council meeting, if, if we want to. And, it, again, we, it's not something we can make a condition of a zone change.
Oh, I realize.
But I just wanted to inform the council that, in, in very unique situations like Schneider Boulevard, we're willing to at least do the research and consider the concept.
Now, there, there's other things that, that have not been done on Schneider that could be, and I'm not, I'm not advocating for these, I'm just saying, another one is just simple, traffic control devices like stop signs could be implemented along Schneider at various locations. It does slow down emergency vehicles, but also causes traffic to slow down today. I mean, there's always, that's always the trade-off, right, is, what's the optimal level? I don't have the answer to that. I'm just letting you know there's other options out there now, or as complicated as maybe speed humps. But, but the data that staff presented, we agreed with it, our engineer agreed with it, says 82 townhomes is actually, all day, the same level, and AM and PM peak are actually less than what we could put in today.
Ms. Fannin, you had a question earlier. I'm sorry it took me so long to get to you.
That's okay. I'm still confused about, Nathan, your footprint of the, of these additional acres. You're saying that it's floodplain, or it's something that cannot, it's not buildable? Is that what you're saying? You were going to build 46 to 50 houses on 10.26 acres originally, and now you have 16.299.
I, I don't know what.
Can you show me the area there that's not buildable?
No, I, I think you're, you're confusing. That's what the interchange is saying. I don't, the 50 acres is not necessarily, the 50 houses, the people today, is not on 10 acres.
Well, that's what your first proposal was.
No, that's not, the first proposal is townhouses. The difference is, the first proposal came down this diagonal line to here and omitted these lots here. And so, the 50 single-family homes are actually more on, I'm going to make a guess here, on 13-ish acres. And, uh, this, the first proposal that you're talking about, Ms. Fannin, was for the townhouses, for the apartments that were proposed. The apartments came down this line here and ignored this, this space here. And when I got involved, I said, hey, what about this land? Because it had been inadvertently omitted, so we needed to add it back into the zone change. Which is why the density, we agreed to reduce the density.
Well, I'm reading from one of their staff reports, Nathan. Says, subject property is an 11.24 acre tract located at the end of Schneider Boulevard. This property was rezoned R1 CPUD with the rest of Pleasant Valley Section 2. Now, is that what you're proposing the 50 houses on?
No, 50 houses are already approved right there.
Okay, and how many acres was that?
That right there, 16.2.
16.2.
Yeah, I, I, if you read after staff report, I don't remember what staff report said with respect to the 50 houses, but that's the, that's, that's what's approved today.
Okay.
That was the staff report from October before they switched to the R2.
Oh, that's the R3.
Yes, and that's all we have, so, okay, that explains that. Thank you.
Any other questions for Nathan at this point on the Pleasant Valley's zone change ordinance?
Nathan, quick question. I think you, I think you, I know you commented on this on the US-25, but did you say Jeff Singer and Nathan and Reva Feldman would be involved?
I mean, one of the things that, that I think, somebody submitted comment, it's actually made the council, you know, the last time this, go ahead and spend some, some time getting your design team and spend some dollars on some, you know, some drawings. So, we, we've relied heavily on Steve Austin, who now lives in Washington State, obviously thoroughbred engineering, and Brent Combs and his team, Darren Croucher, who is the traffic engineer, you know, I got to do the legal work, which is the easiest of all of the stuff. And so, from that, when you ask about design stuff, they went ahead and gave Jeff Singer, who's a landscape architect, and Reva Feldman to help design the, the architectural stuff of this. So, they, those drawings came from Steve, because he already had the conceptual knowledge of the fronts. But based on those comments, that's who they decided to say, we know, we've heard the comments, we want a good product, we want it to market, and we need somebody who was there in Georgetown, know just what people are buying.
Mayor, if there are no other questions, I'm going to make a motion for approval.
Okay. We get, do we do second reading?
Well, I thought I'd say. No.
You get Tracy to do the summary, and then, then we'll, we'll move in that direction.
An ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property contains 16.299 acres located at Pleasant Valley subdivision, Section 2, Phase 2, Unit 3, Georgetown County, Kentucky, from R1 CPUD and R2 CPUD. Summary, and when the official Georgetown Scott County zoning map showed a change in the zoning classification for certain real property consisting of a total of 16.299 acres located at Pleasant Valley subdivision, Section 2, Phase 2, Unit 3, Georgetown Scott County, Kentucky, from R1 CPUD and R2 CPUD. residential provides for several built-to-youth living consists of ordinances and an effective date upon passage of publication. The full text of the ordinance is available for examination at Georgetown City Clerk's office, 100 North Fourth Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, 4034, or www georgetownpy dot gov. Introduced to public review the first time November 27, 2017. Public review the second time December 11.
Motion's made. Is there a second?
I'll make a second.
Thank you. There's no further discussion, I'll ask Tracy to call the roll.
Yes.
Mrs. Tuckett?
Yes.
Mrs. Tinglestang?
No.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mrs. Singer-Erdley?
No.
Mrs. Butcher-Conway?
No.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five to three, and that will conclude our consideration of Pleasant Valley's zone change. We've kept one gentleman here who is just here to.
I think he just walked out the door.
He did.
Maybe he just went to the. Let me back up to the balance of our agenda in the correct order, and we'll, we'll go through the rest of it just as expeditiously as we can. We finished public comments, and for mayor comments, a handful of comments in addition to what's printed on the agenda. Wanted council to know that we had received the RFQs for the, our, potential architect for the potential city hall renovation. We've had, the scoring committee has one, has had one meeting on those, and they will meet again.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, to complete that process of scoring those RFQs. We did ask Ms. Erdley to sit on, on that, on that scoring committee. At your place tonight, each of you should have found a fraud questionnaire from our audit staff, so.
Right here.
There, there, thank you. And, and there's a self-addressed, postage-paid envelope, and, and they do get real serious about receiving those.
They're getting crazy.
Please make, please make sure that those get turned in.
They're getting crazy when we get on.
Also, there's been a, a question at several council meetings about the landscaping around the Clark Pump and Go. And what we've learned is, that is a combination of dogwoods and pantries, that planning and zoning does have a square footage requirement about canopy. But in this case, these owners chose to go beyond the planning and zoning minimum, and what they have done has been done on their own.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Let's see, we've already talked about the time-of-day protected phasing on the, the traffic light on US-25, and that we did not receive the same response for the traffic light at Payne's Depot, the bypass. Also, wanted to, if y'all haven't heard about it, Bluegrass Community Action is going to have an announcement this Friday at 1:00 at the public library. We don't have details about the announcement, but we're pretty confident it's going to be announcing some form of bus routes. Not sure if it's a loop route in Georgetown, or if it's to Lexington, but that will be a significant announcement for us if anyone would like to attend. Also, if I go to the printed parts of the mayor's comments, we do have the unusual set of circumstances of a, a whole series of board appointments, of people coming off, coming off boards in almost every case because they've served their full two-year terms. We have one on here where a person asked not to be reappointed. But, the first one is an executive order appointing Dwayne Ellison to the Parks and Recreation Board for a four-year term in 12/31/21. Sometimes, as I run across council members, I'll ask for ideas and names, and, Mr. Ellison, I think, was an outstanding selection that Polly recommended. And, Dwayne was excited as a kid on Christmas Day about, about doing that. He just has a heart for children. So.
I'll make a question.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
No questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item B is an executive order appointing, appointing Damian Nichols to the Board of Adjustments for a four-year term. I think there's a bio for Damian in, in your packet.
No, it's not in there.
It's, oh, well, we got a really nice bio from, from David. He is, he works for the center of town, he works for the Board of Education, is a crossing guard, he pastors a church, and he's just a very serious young man.
Motion, Mayor.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I know about this next one now.
Now, just to let you know that, that we actually have two vacancies for the Board of Adjustments, and I've got one invitation out, and the person wasn't able to get me an answer yet. So, I'll bring that one to you in January. Item C is an executive order appointing some guy named Glenn Williams to the GMWSS Board. And in the same motion, we'd like to reappoint Megan Travis, Les Jarvis, and Terry Mauer for their second four-year terms.
So, I'll let.
Thank you.
Second?
And seconded? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item D is incomplete on your agenda, but it is an executive order reappointing Catherine McKenzie and Douglas Griggs for a four-year term to end on 12/31/21 for the Ethics Commission. Also, in January, we will bring you a, a new appointment, David Thompson, longtime chair of the Ethics Commission, has termed out. So, we'll invite David back for when we receive the designation for KLC, about the Certified City of Ethics, and we'll honor David again at that time. We've invoked those. Is there a motion to, to approve the reappointments to the Ethics Commission?
Motion.
Thank you. Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item E is an executive order appointing Ken Kuring to the Planning Commission for a four-year term to end 12/31, 12/31/2021.
Motion. No, and I have something to, I have to accuse myself, I'm related to his wife, and also his sister-in-law is a client of mine, so I've got two connections.
And I used to work with him directly with my business that I had when he was a, he's been a builder for years and connected with Mallard Point, and that's when I met him, so I don't need to vote.
You need a second.
Oh, I thought you seconded it.
I will.
Okay. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item F on your agenda is an executive order appointing Millie Butcher Conway.
Mayor, we might have to change. We all worked for.
Go ahead, give it all out. What'd you say?
She used lifeguard me when I was a kid.
Oh, my God, thanks a lot.
Goodness, Mayor. You're not that good, I know.
Thanks a lot for the age discrepancy there.
Andrew, are there any, any circumstances here?
I'm losing control of this.
Mayor, I'll make a motion for Millie.
Sorry, lost control of us. Second.
And a second. And just so everyone will know, the Friends of the Park is a 501(c)(3). It is not a government agency.
It's a nonprofit.
A not-for-profit. As they put the board together, they asked for two magistrates and one city council member, and I figure Millie's equal to two magistrates, so.
There you go.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much.
Uh, do we vote on that?
No.
No.
Millie says you had to vote on the end, yeah.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
That's understatement.
Item G is simply to make you aware. You've all seen the kind of gap to the appearance we have to the cemetery wall.
Yes.
Yes.
We finally cleaned up the block, but the gap is still there. I don't know if any of you all have walked that recently, but the entire wall is tilting toward Broadway. It's... And there's already another, about a hundred yards up, there's already a... Or a hundred feet up, there's already another significant crack that's leaning. We've gotten estimates from two different local stone contractors. We know it's going to be over the bid amount. Just the general estimates were eleven thousand and seventeen thousand. And all that did is fix the gap. Our concern is fixing the gap is literally a Band-Aid that's not going to stay there. I'm afraid that this jewel, that is Georgetown Cemetery, is going to require some money. We think... What we'd like to investigate, we think a better solution is to replace the entire wall, which will mean excavating behind the wall, taking out the foundation, probably taking out the sidewalk. The other reason we're a bit reluctant to do a patch is these old stone blocks, you can't buy that exact mold today. They can make some that are very close, but they won't be weathered, and they won't look the same. We think that's such a centerpiece of Georgetown that we need to make it look consistent. And we also think structurally, it's silly to do anything but repair. Just wanted you all to know that, and get some direction from the council, we can attempt a cheaper fix, because the big fix is probably going to be a hundred thousand dollars.
It's worthy of the right fix.
It is.
And the right appearance.
Okay.
That's one of the main things that people look at when they're around here, you know? Wow, it's a beautiful wall.
And it's part of the corridor coming into Georgetown. There's... I can think of a lot of reasons we need to do it right, as you have stated.
Good. Then we'll take that deal and move forward with getting estimates to both fix the foundation, put in appropriate drainage so it lasts a long time, and then go back and rebuild it correctly.
And Mayor, even seeing some type of a rendering, you know, front elevation of what that might look like would be probably helpful.
If we're going to spend that much money, you think that'd be appropriate?
How old is that wall?
Oh, wow. Really?
Gosh, I have no idea.
It probably wasn't built the original time of the cemetery, but I didn't know the actual age of the wall.
Do you think it was built in the early eighteen hundreds?
I bet it was, too. That's probably the turn of the century.
In bed in my head.
Well, maybe we can rebuild it, and it'll stay another hundred years.
That'd be great.
That's enough for a hundred years?
That'd be a good ratio. Believe it or not, it is item seven on the agenda. John, Chief Ford? Chief Ford has worked with Kentucky American Water Company on a grant for the fire department, and our friend from Kentucky American has been very patient in sitting through a civics lesson. But please, floor's yours.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Kevin Rogers, and I work with Kentucky American Water. And actually, sitting here was fine, because as of last month, I'm a new resident of Georgetown, so I'm learning what's going on in my community.
Welcome down.
But we are... We consider it an honor and a privilege to be a water provider in central Kentucky, and specifically here in Scott County and Georgetown. And one of the ways we like to give back to the communities through grants, and we work with grants on environmental projects for different folks, but also, we take our drinking water responsibilities seriously, but also our fire protection, the role we play with that. And we believe we're partners with the fire departments in the areas we serve. And so, we have a grant program each year, and Georgetown filled out an application this fall for a grant for some personal protective equipment, for some LED traffic batons, I believe. And so, we have a check for five hundred dollars to go towards the purchase of those, and we hope that they will be used to protect your firemen, but also your communities as they work through.
Thank you very much, and welcome to Georgetown.
Thank you.
You can come bring a check anytime.
You don't do a grand cemetery wall, do you?
No. Unfortunately, the PSC doesn't... They frown on that.
It's on Georgetown water.
It is, as a matter of fact. Okay. Let's see. Kiran's mentioned a couple of times in council meetings about the drainage issue. And Kyle did a bunch of homework, and we've actually got pictures to show you. And we think we have answers to what the issue is.
Nathan, you didn't run away with our clicker, did you?
Nathan's got the clicker.
There's this. It's right there.
All right, good.
I can't wait to get out of here.
He's going to take his easel and go home.
Andrew, do you want those to record, by the way? Do you want those for the record?
Yes.
If there's a bag over here.
Ah, you have to take it back here.
Let me give them for record.
Oh, okay.
So Craig Price, who lives at Creekview, came to me a while back with a drainage complaint. And we looked at some plats, and we're not able to find out. We found out that this was not within an easement, a drainage easement. So he believed it was, so we asked him to go try and find a plat showing that it was. And he was unable to. So basically, we're at a point where he's got a concern with a storm pipe. That is a publicly-used pipe that's not within a stormwater easement, so we cannot really go and do any work on private property. I can just show you what the problem is here real quick. This... Where this stake is, is where the hole is located, and this is the outfall of that pipe. As you can see, the pipe is pretty well clogged, in addition to having that issue. This next image, it's kind of hard to tell, but the pipe is separating here. It's a plastic pipe. That's just... That's the issue that he has. He brought to our attention. This is his backyard, this fenced-in area. That is where the hole is located, and that's where the outfall is located. And wow, that came out really small.
Looked like a skeleton.
That's crazy.
All right.
I don't even think my glasses are going to help me on that.
Yeah, all right.
Binoculars.
All right. This is... Shoot, it's not Morgan Mill, it's Old Mill. This is Old Mill. You have Fern Hill down here, and here's Creekview Court. These two catch basins collect off of Old Mill and transfer this water through a pipe down here. This highlighted piece is his property. That little circle there is where the hole is located, and that is the outfall. And this is... I showed you that first because this one's a little more complicated with all the other structures involved. So that's why I found out about the issue. And I think we are just looking for direction on how to proceed.
We're optimistic that it's even a repair that our public works crews might be able to do. But once again, it's on private property, and we need you all to...
Is that his property?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And we'd have to create an easement.
Mm-hmm.
And get that off record.
Right.
And then go make the repairs.
Is there another one on Morgan Mill? Because it's...
That is Morgan Mill.
That down here is...
I think it is Morgan Mill, Kyle. Could be wrong.
I just looked it up just to be sure.
It's Creekside. The gentleman that I actually talked to, his... The other drainage, is there another one that's on Morgan Mill?
This is the only one we've been contacted about. I just assumed.
No, I've been contacted about, and the gentleman lives on Morgan Mill, and so it's on up. Creekside's down at the bottom, so it's on up. There must be another drainage up there like this one.
Do you have an address?
Of course not.
What's his... You got his name?
Um, Mr. Flynn. Doesn't Morgan Mill run along the creek? Or is that Kelsey Court? Morgan Mill runs along the creek as well. It's Flynn.
And so, the reason I'm saying is I think they go downhill.
There you go.
Well, it sounds like when they built the subdivision out, they probably did this in more than one spot.
It's running straight to the creek, one big park.
Where we find ourselves again, and we'll continue to have these same conversations. We've got a number of storm sewer problems, and we are continuing to try to repair those out of our general fund. And with direction, we'll create an easement, and we'll try and fix this one.
Mayor, it looks like a safety issue could be at stake here. Is that the way you all see it as well? The hole? Yeah. Sure. Okay. But again, it's on private property, so... Right, right. The safety issue. But it's clearly from the city street. Yes. You know? I don't know. I mean, if it's something our public works can do, and it's a safety issue, and it looks like it's our responsibility, I would be in favor of taking care of it, if it's, you know, as minimal as it seems.
I'm in favor of moving forward to get an easement so you can go on the property to do that. If you need a motion for that, Mayor, I'd be glad to do it.
Okay, and then we'll look at the map even closer and see if we can find another one.
Yeah.
What is the issue that the guy from Morgan Mill...
Also about cleaning, whose responsibility it is actually to clean it out, to take care of it, to make sure it's doing what it's supposed to do.
Maybe his ain't broke, he just needs cleaning.
It could be. It could be.
While they're over there, they might have to look.
Mm-hmm.
So you don't have an address?
No, I have his last name if you look up there.
I can look up the PVA real quick if you want me to.
His last name is Flynn.
That's what he's on. PVA? No, he's on GIS. Sorry.
And it's Morgan Mill, his last name is Flynn.
Listen.
Two ends, one end.
He's got it.
You got it?
He's so quick.
There it is. There it is. One thirteen Morgan Mill.
Thirteen.
So... I didn't know. This is really cool. You've impressed me, Kyle. It takes a lot.
You can thank the folks at Planning and Zoning for providing the entertainment for this evening.
This is...
Now, I just learned how to use the...
All on the Planning and Zoning website, and it's available to anybody.
That was one thirteen, correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So that's on this plat. Let's see what we can pull up here.
So he would back up to the creek.
Trying to figure out where one thirteen is. Right here. It's hard to tell from here, but I don't see any easements right off the bat. I'd have to take a harder look at it. It's kind of hard to tell. We'll have to go back another plat or two. At least you know where it is.
Yeah.
It's good.
And I'll ask a couple more questions, but in the meantime, it helped us to find the other problem, anyway.
Was that your motion to fix?
It was, Mayor.
It was. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mayor.
Seconds everywhere. And that's to fix the Price property, where the hole and the outfall separate. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. Can I go one step farther? If we find a similar issue that is not within the easement, would it be... It would be more financially feasible for us to hire one surveyor at one time to go and do both?
If you...
Motion.
Motion. You second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Kyle, I do have his telephone number, so I'll give that to you tonight, and then you can call him. And you can get the details instead of me being the middleman.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Do you second that? Thanks, Kyle.
Thanks, Kyle. That's good. Back to item nine on the agenda, which has a bunch of stuff on there. If we prepare to go to items A and B, which are first reading of an annexation ordinance for one sixty-seven Industry Road, and then a first reading of a zone change ordinance for one sixty-seven Industry Road. So... Yeah, well, is this one you want to stay for, Chuck, or is this one you wanted to...
If it's first reading, do I need to leave?
No, first.
Yeah, you should. Any discussion, I would...
Why you're out there? No, kidding.
We sure are thirsty.
Any explanation we need to give, or just go ahead and read the...
Are there representatives here? Okay, well, we have the representative here, property owner. But this is a... And we have folks from P and Z here. But this was a... Brought to the Planning Commission in October for a zone change. It is in the Scott County Industrial Park. It is adjacent to property. That is... It is city property within the city limits. And it is a zone change to... From agricultural to industrial, which is consistent with the industrial park, consistent with the comprehensive plan. There was no public comment at all from... At the Planning Commission meeting, it was unanimous.
No opposition.
No opposition, right, sorry. And it is contingent upon annexation into the city.
So shall we have first reading?
An ordinance asking into the city of Georgetown, certain real property containing five point oh oh one acres located at one sixty-seven Industry Road in Scott County, Kentucky. Summary. Anaxes into Georgetown city limits by written consent of the property owners in accordance with KRS eighty-one A four twelve, five point oh oh one acres of property on located at one sixty-seven Industry Road in Scott County, Kentucky. Two. Provides for an effective date upon passage of publication. Published and introduced and read for the first time December eleventh, twenty seventeen.
Also, need to note that I received the consent, the signed notarized consent form today. Still working on the exact property description, but they were supposed to have that to me right away as well.
Good. So that'll constitute first reading of the annexation ordinance. And now we can proceed with first reading of the zone change ordinance.
An ordinance changing the zone classification of certain real property containing five point zero zero one acres located at one sixty-seven Industry Road in Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky from A one to I one. Summary. Amendment's the official Georgetown Scott County zoning map to show a change in the zone classification for certain real property consisting of a certain real, consisting of a total of five point oh oh one acres located at one sixty-seven Industry Road in the city of Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky, from A one agricultural to I one light industrial. Which amendment is contingent upon the passage of the ordinance annexing the property into the city limits. Provides for several ability or repeal of inconsistent ordinances and an effective date upon passage and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination at Georgetown City Clerk's Office, one hundred North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, four oh three two four, or at www georgetownk y dot gov. Introduced in public and read for the first time December eleventh, twenty seventeen.
Thank you. That'll be first reading of that one, and we'll anticipate, we'll expect to undertake second reading in our first meeting in January.
Correct. And that'll be the last opportunity we'll have to do that.
That's true. Oh, that's true. So that will complete items A and B, and David, as we approach C and D, would you send Chuck back in?
Sure, and I'll exit.
And you'll exit.
While you're out there.
So the last one, that means no apartments on that one, right?
I don't think so.
That's in industrial park, I hope.
It's a secret.
I don't have any I can leave on.
As the lighter gets, the life happier we get.
Owners of the property and this zone change and annexation here?
Yeah.
Or any questions?
This is a first reading of an annexation ordinance for eleven hundred Lexington Road. And then we'll follow that up with first reading of a zone change ordinance for eleven hundred Lexington Road. Now, many of you are probably surprised that eleven hundred Lexington Road's not in the city. But you all know the beautiful Bedford Stonehouse that Carl and Lola Peters had, that her daughter now owns, and, uh, that's the property we're looking at.
An ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property containing one point two two acres located eleven hundred Lexington Road in Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky, from A one to B two. Summary amends the official Georgetown Scott County zoning map to show a change in the zoning classification for certain real property consisting of a total of one point two two acres located eleven hundred Lexington Road in the city of Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky, from A one agricultural to B two highway commercial. Which amendment is contingent upon the passage of the ordinance annexing the property into the city limits. Provides for several ability repeal of inconsistent ordinances and effective date upon passage and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, one hundred North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, four oh three two four, or at www dot georgetown ky dot gov. Introduced and publicly read for the first time December eleventh, twenty seventeen.
Uh, could you back up? Uh, there was one, no kidding.
One more, now, didn't you, Chuck? Thank you. So that's first reading of the annexation ordinance, and shall we do the zone change?
An ordinance amending ordinance sixteen oh oh nine.
Of course it is.
Oh, here it is. Zoning, right?
Yes.
An ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property containing one point two two acres located eleven hundred Lexington Road in Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky, from A one to B two. Summary amends the official Georgetown Scott County zoning map to show a change in the zoning classification for certain real property consisting of s- a total of one point two two acres located eleven hundred Lexington Road in the city of Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky, from A one agricultural to B two highway commercial. Which amendment is contingent upon the passage of the ordinance annexing the property into the city limits. Provides for several ability repeal of inconsistent ordinances and an effective date upon passage and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, one hundred George Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, four oh three two four, or at www dot georgetown ky dot gov. Introduced and publicly read for the first time December eleventh, twenty seventeen.
And again, this was a, uh, there was no opposition to this. It was, uh, relatively straightforward zone change and annexation consistent with the comprehensive plan. Uh, consistent with all the surrounding, obviously, all the surrounding business.
That constitutes first reading of that as well. I'm sorry to make y'all wait so long, but civics lesson again. You know everything that's going on in Georgetown now.
You know all about the civics.
Exactly. That's exactly right, and we'll look forward to second reading of those ordinances in January. Let's see. Uh, item G under City Attorney, we had discussed, uh, some revisions to the new code enforcement ordinance. Where we were racking up fines faster than we thought was, was appropriate. So we, we styled this on the agenda as, uh, either a discussion or a first reading of a code enforcement ordinance. If you're ready for first reading, we can do that tonight, or we can, we can read it and then let you all, well, or we can just let you discuss it. It's whatever, uh-
You have changes you wanna-
Unless you have changes that you wanna make. But we'd be glad to, to walk through first reading, uh, via summary, let you all see what those changes are, and if you want us to tweak it further, we'll be glad to do that and bring it back to you.
Well, you let me, if, if I could borrow the summary, I'm gonna just go over a couple of kinda key things real fast. Promise to make it short. A, a lot of the changes are just to, to make the ordinance match changes that were made in the twenty seventeen session. Match our ordinance to match the state law. And there, there are a lot of procedural, how you serve notice, makeup of the board. So those, those changes are just relatively minor, but they are all necessary. There was question about whether, uh, it wasn't stated clearly that the code enforcement officer had the authority a time period for abating, or remitting a nuisance, shorter or longer, based on the circumstances. We made that clarification. There's a reference to a one hundred dollar admin fee for whenever there is a, it is necessary for the city to abate a violation. We made that clearer. It was referenced in a section that, that wasn't clear. So we moved that, um, to a place where it was more clear. One of the, one of the bigger ones was, we, we talked a lot before about my authority to reduce or waive penalties. And there's been a lot, there's been a lot of requests to reduce and waive penalties, and our suggestion is that, not that there's not legitimate times when I need to reduce a penalty or, um, negotiate, but there needs to be a limit on that. It needs to be, um, under, the, the three circumstances I'm suggesting are, if there's an error we've made, obviously, we would want to talk about, you know, what impact that has. Maybe the case needs to be withdrawn altogether, but I would consider that sort of a potential for a waiver. Or if we made an error in the, in the application, um, if, if the, if it's in bankruptcy, and, and there, it, it's insolvent, you know, it, it might, we might naturally have to reduce the penalties. But if, otherwise, they, you need to show, I think the, the violator needs to show that there was some good cause for why they couldn't comply with the time required for the abatement. For instance, if it is a tall grass violation, and it rains for two weeks straight, obviously, we're not gonna send you out there to mow when it's been raining for two weeks straight. Or, um, you know, weather, or, um, earthquake, or fire, or what have you, those are all gonna be legitimate circumstances. Or we had a situation where both of the property owners died within five days of one another.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. So, the, the husband and wife, within five days, we get a tall grass complaint, we go out, and, and the, the, um, surviving heirs live in California. There are gonna be some legitimate circumstances where you might say, hey, you know what, we understand that that happened, but we kinda list what some of those, um, legitimate, good, good cause, what those are. So, we're suggesting in this amendment that there be that limitation on waiving, reducing penalties. Also, along the lines of, uh, clarification, we, we wanted to clarify, because it came up in a, in a hearing, to clarify that either the hearing officer or the board has the authority to, um, increase or decrease penalties. And that's consistent with the intent of what's in the state law. It's just not specifically stated. So if, if somebody appeals, uh, a five hundred dollar fine, and the, um, code enforcement board or the hearing officer feels that, based on the totality of the circumstances, that penalty is too high or too low, they would have the authority to change that. Again, that's, that's contemplated in the text of the state law, but it's not directly stated in our ordinance. Okay, so this is kinda the biggest one. Right now, our penalty structure is, it's, it's static for, regardless of what the offense is. Right? So regardless of how egregious the offense is, or how, what the impact of that offense is, you get the same penalty structure, and I'm, I'm talking and I'm scrolling through it. So it's, if this is your first offense within a twenty-four month period, and you remedy it within time, we don't give you any penalty. And, um, but if you, if it's that same penalty, and you go, uh, uh, seven days without remedying it, you automatically jump to a three hundred dollar penalty. And what we figured out is, we rack up those penalties real fast on a, on a, on a tall grass violation, and quickly you get to nine hundred dollars. And we need to be mowing these things quicker. That's another issue. But, um, what we're suggesting is, we look at, we, we divide the violations up into classes. So, class one violation, class two violation, class, class three violation, and, and we would make mowing, for instance, a class one violation. Class one violation has an initial fine. You still get the, the free pass. But the, the initial fine on a class one violation would be fifty dollars. And then for every seven days beyond that, it's another fifty dollars, instead of jumping immediately to three hundred dollars. Class two would be a hundred dollars, and then a hundred dollars beyond that, and then class three would be two hundred dollars, and two hundred dollars beyond that.
What's class two and class three, though?
It's ju, it's, that's just the classifications that we've created.
And what, what defines that classification?
We, we define that later in the, in each individual violation, we state, this is a class one violation, this is a class two violation, this is a class three violation.
I mean, that's stated somewhere in the ordinance to define what, like, mowing is a class one. Like, we had a building fall down, that would be to clean it up, that would, I'm sure that would be like a class three or something, but is that stated that this falls into those categories?
So, yeah, so what we do is, I'll give you an example.
What I'm trying to say is, the board's not making it up as they go along, what they're sticking into.
No, they are not. It is stated in, uh-
So each class has got certain, either cars or grass or something that's wrong.
And it's big broad category.
Yeah, yeah.
So, all of violations of the nuisance code are gonna be considered a class one violation. I'm gonna try to find one that was a class two. I should've had that handier. Most of them are, we're categorizing as class one violation. But, let's see, section fifteen dash eighty-three. I'm trying to remember which one that is. We made that a class two violation. I think we only, I think we only made one class three violation. One of those was a, uh, violation of the illicit discharge ordinance, which we felt like, you know, if you're, if you're dumping, um, bad stuff down a drain, that's probably more egregious than having tall grass. And we're willing to talk about how we came up with those classifications, but, but more or less, what we did was say, take this group of violations, and we're determining that's a class one or a class two.
Okay. Tell, tell us how the seven days, when does that start? Does it start when they type the letter and they put today's date on it, and then they take it to the post office and mail it, when it is, when it's received, or when does the clock start ticking?
Right. According to the statute, the clock would start ticking from the moment you served it. And the state did change the law on how you serve a notice of violation or a citation, and used to require you to mail it and post it. Or to personally serve it. Now, it just says mail. So as soon as you go and you stick it in the, in the, in the first-class mail, that's considered served.
So the date on the mail, when it's at the post office, will be the date that it starts?
Right. That's what state law says.
Yeah, but-
So what?
We're, we're gonna, we have been lenient with that. Somebody comes to us and says, look, it says seven days, but I actually received it the next day, we're gonna, we're gonna listen to that.
Yeah. Or the Sunday was involved, or something.
Yes. And seven days is seven days, because it's-
Okay.
Andrew, I'm just gonna share this, 'cause it's, it's personal experience, and sometimes personal experiences is the best way to understand and, and apply these ordinances, but if, if you live in a neighborhood, seven days isn't a long time to get your yard mowed, I don't think.
True.
But if you happen on a piece of land, and it's undeveloped land, sometimes it can take a little bit of time to get somebody in there to bush hog it. By the time you get the notice, you might've lost a day or two. By the time you contact somebody, you know, and get somebody to contract to do it-
They can't come in right away.
That's a, that's a good point, and that's another thing that's in, that is a revision, but it's also another thing, is other, it's something we've done administratively to ease that burden. And it's something that we're going to incorporate into the notice itself. But the ordinance now, or will specifically state, if you have a legitimate reason for why you cannot comply with that, call us, ask for an extension, and we'll give you that extension, as long as the code enforcement officer determines that that is, you know, a legitimate reason. There's good cause for that. And we will put that specific, it's actually already in there, but we will make it, we'll bold it. If you, if for any reason you cannot meet the timeline required in this notice, call us, and we'll work with you.
That'll be in the notice, then?
Yes.
Oh, that's important.
Technically already is.
Okay.
But we'll, we'll make it bigger and bolder. Yes.
Serious.
Highlight it, right. The, also, we, so we talked about when you get a notice of violation, there's a trigger, which is sort of a courtesy. So you get a notice of violation, that's an extra five days on the front end, where there's really no harm, no foul. This is just us giving you a written, written warning, essentially, that if you don't do something, we're gonna come back out, and we're gonna give you the citation, which is gonna give you the, another seven days. The current standard is, if you haven't had a violation within the past twenty-four months, you get that courtesy.
Okay.
We're shortening that. And we're saying, if you haven't had a violation within the past, within the current fiscal, or I'm sorry, calendar year. So, you know, you might be entitled to two courtesy notices within a month of one another, depending on when you got that first one. But we feel like shortening that timeframe, we're maximizing the courtesy notices to folks. So, in more cases, people are gonna get twelve days' notice instead of just seven. That's right.
And it don't take twelve days to clean it up.
Exactly. A chief issue that we had with noise complaints was, al- almost, if not exclusively, all of the things that we're controlling with our code enforcement ordinance are property-related violations. So you got tall grass, or you got, um, dilapidated structure, or you got a car parked in your yard, or you got junk in your yard. These are all property violations. Whereas noise complaints aren't always.
No.
And, and noise complaints almost always involve immediate action. So we're taking noise back out of the civil world and putting it back into the criminal world. If the police come, if the police get called for, uh, a rowdy party, they go out there, they need the authority to say, shut down now. Or turn it down, or we're gonna ask you to leave. Or if they have to pull over a motorist with a, um, stereo that's too loud, that's not tied to property, that's, I mean, other than personal property, so that makes enforcement under civil, it's very difficult. So we're, it was, it was requested by the police department that we take that back out, 'cause it, it started as a criminal offense. We take it back out of the civil and put it back into criminal. We had, we had issues with, you got a development that has a hundred and thirty lots. Eighty percent of those are vacant lots that are being prepared to be sold for development or being developed. Right now, they're all in the hands of one owner. The owner lets the, the grass get too tall, code enforcement comes out and gives them a citation. Did they give them a hundred and thirty citations? Or did they give them one? And, and if it's a hundred and thirty, that's a real big bill. So, obviously, that, we're not gonna give them that, but I want it to be stated in the ordinance, that if it's common ownership under a subdivision that's platted, multiple lots, that they're gonna get one citation for a violation that's consistent across all of those. That's, that's essentially the changes, in a nutshell.
Those are good changes.
Yeah.
And we said when we started writing this and, and putting this together, that we were gonna tweak it.
You, you, you've learned by doing it.
That's right.
Uh, and we, we've learned that there are, there are difficulties, and, and we need flexibility. And racking up a nine hundred dollar penalty on tall grass was an unintended consequence. And I don't, I don't think those kinds of numbers are what we were looking at. So we're-
How many people have you had to wait?
Four or five, all, all tall grass.
How, how many people have we caught in a violation that didn't clean up their violation when they were notified, that had to go through, has gone through the process?
When you said gone through the process-
Of going in front, hearing in front of the-
The city itself has had two hearings. And the county had another two. Not nearly as many as I anticipated.
So are you saying you're getting your fines paid a little easier, or they're-
Or they're not getting fined?
Or they're not getting fined?
No, there, there's a, a lot of both. There's a lot that are getting fined, there's a lot that are fixing their problems, there's a lot that are not doing anything, and they're not appealing. And, um, there's a lot that are bank-owned properties, that are just gonna continue to rack up, fine after fine after fine, until the property is sold.
Then you collect that down maybe?
And we'll get to do an interesting analysis of this when we, uh, start budget review. You know, 'cause we, we guesstimated how many hearings, and how many hearing exam orders we might need. And we, we built that budget just based on expectations. And if we're having slightly less activity, then we're probably spending less money.
We will have a, we will have towards budget time a full report of, you know, numbers of violations, numbers of citation, how much, yeah, fees, the types. And the, and the great news is, we started using our new city work system to do all of our code enforcement stuff, and it can spit out all of that info pretty readily.
Good. May I ask you a question? I had a neighbor of mine mention the fact that she felt like three or four different families were living in one house, next door to her. That's a code enforcement situation, isn't it? I mean, how can we prove, what do, what do you do to-
You ask a really good question, and that's come up recently. And, and technically, that's probably a zoning issue. Yeah, it could be potentially a building code issue, if they've illegally subdivided the house. But if it's just too many people living in a house, I don't know, but there's-
They don't all have the same last name. I mean, they're-
Sure.
Different.
I would think that it would have something to do with the lease. Who's on the lease, huh?
It's a private house in a residential area.
You got a number of things it could be. If you got too many people in a house, that could potentially be a fire, life safety code type issue.
Could be a health issue, too.
It could be a health issue, it could be, uh, planning and zoning issue of illegal subdivision of a house. It, I guess it all depends on the circumstances, on exactly what, and they're all enforced differently.
Well, I was gonna ask, a man owns it, and then he rents it to one individual who, or a fa- one family, who then let other people, you know, occupy the house. And I didn't know how, is it the police, are they, I mean, how do you, is it dusty, is it, how do you-
We can start with dusty.
How do you verify how many people are in there?
It's sometimes really tough, because you're gonna need a basis for determining that, and that can be very difficult, yeah. Proving that is another, that is, I will tell you that that, historically, all across America, is a very difficult area to enter into, because you don't just have the right to walk in and say, hey, can we-
Right, right. She just asked me to check on it, and I said, I would ask you. I would ask you.
Most of the time you do catch things like that is when it comes back to, uh, that they park, park in the yard, 'cause there's not enough places for parking, they don't mow the grass, 'cause nobody wants to take responsibility for it, 'cause we're all, those kind of things is where you usually start to un-
Shouldn't that go back on the person who actually owns the house, though, if?
It probably would.
I mean, I don't know.
If you can, if you can prove the violation, then it will, that's the tough part.
You know, we had zero luck with this.
No further.
When the people, uh, traveled the entire front yard, there were so many people living in the house, and we didn't do, we, we didn't do anything about it.
And it was obvious there weren't that many cars for one, one family, you know? Yeah, they put the gravel out there.
Okay, uh, any other questions about, uh, Andrew's explanation of what this ordinance will do? If, if y'all are satisfied, then, uh, we'll let Tracy do first reading, and we'll get that formally under our belt.
I think we're moving in the right direction, Mayor.
We can bring it back to you for, uh, second reading.
An ordinance amending ordinance sixteen oh oh nine and making various related revisions, something. Amends ordinance twenty sixteen oh oh one to make various changes necessary to make the ordinance consistent with recent changes to the state law, to clarify that the code enforcement officer has discretion to require a shorter or longer period of remediation, as warranted, to make the default remediation period seven days, to clarify that a hundred dollar admin fee is added to every violation requiring abatement by the city, to limit the city attorney's discretion to reduce or waive penalties to situations involving error by the city, insolvency of the violator, or good cause for failure to remedy the violation, or if the penalty exceeds the value of the property to provide example of good cause, to clarify that the hearing officer or board has the authority to increase or decrease penalties based on the totality of the circumstances in the case, to amend the penalty structure, to provide for three classes of violations with separate penalty structures, to change the trigger for when a violator receives a courtesy notice of violation from the first offense within a twenty-four month period to the first offense within the same calendar year, and amends various sections of the code of ordinances to specify whether the violations are class one, two, or three. For purposes of determining penalties, makes violation of the noise ordinance a criminal penalty, rather than a civil penalty subject to enforcement through the code enforcement board, provides that a violation existing on multiple vacant lots of common ownership is, and a platted subdivision shall be considered one violation, provide for severability, repeal of inconsistent ordinances, and effective date of prom passage and publication. Full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the city clerk's office one hundred North Port Street, Georgetown, Kentucky four oh three two four, or at www georgetown ky.gov. Introduced in public where after the first time, December eleventh, twenty seventeen.
Thank you. First reading. Item H on your agenda is an order amending municipal order thirteen twelve regarding the sponsorship of ordinances. And if you'll just take a moment and look back up through the, uh, all the items on number nine, uh, on your agenda.
I took the hit for the team.
Connie, frankly, uh, I should've said it when the crowd was here. Connie has been willing to sponsor these, and, and, uh, on controversial zone changes, that takes a lot of courage. To put the issue into play. I admire that. But we also, uh, we, we've had questions from Chuck and other council members about exactly how that sponsorship should work. Good questions. If, if it comes from planning and zoning as a positive recommendation, should it require a sponsor to be introduced and discussed at the council meeting? So, we've done some work on that, Andrew.
So again, the, the majority of what we're doing is just taking the existing MO, which you all passed in two thousand thirteen, which required a sponsor. It required that sponsor to be listed on the agenda, and it required, um, that, that council member essentially be prepared to discuss the merits of that, um, ordinance. And then it also said, if, if at any time that council member withdrew their, um, sponsorship, that it, a new sponsor needed to be found. So, we reviewed the, the attorney general opinion and the, the state law, and, and sponsor is probably not the right, it's definitely not the right word, because sponsor implies, I support this. Whereas the state law simply says, the mayor lacks the authority to place on for consideration before this body and ordinance, without this, without a council member having introduced it, a legislative body member. So the solution, I think, is to simply substitute introduce for discussion, for the word sponsorship, um, but also eliminating that requirement that if that council member withdraws, you can't really withdraw, um, introducing for discussion. And the state law doesn't support that. Once it's been placed on the table, it's placed on the table. And the solution would be, if, if a council member doesn't want it to go for further discussion, they should make a motion that it be, that it be tabled, essentially, or withdrawn from consideration. So, I think the best thing to do is to have Tracy read the MO, which amends the old MO, and everywhere where it struck through, just skip over that, and read it as it will read.
Doesn't Kentucky leaves the city, though, or don't they use, because it's where we got it originally, don't they use the word sponsor, and recommend the word sponsor?
They use the word sponsor in their, um, manual, but they do not, they do not require it to use the word sponsor.
Personally, I like the word sponsor. This is, this is actually the ordinance, this one, the one before that was actually one that I brought, 'cause we used to not put anybody's name next to it, so I brought that to it. And the reason I like sponsor is because it takes ownership from it. Because if you're serious enough to put it on, on the agenda, then you should be serious enough to take ownership for it, like, like Connie did, and Connie ended up voting for, I'm not sure if it really had me voted on, but Connie ended up voting for what she took, what she took ownership, and she usually does. So, I like the word sponsor because it has weight and gives council responsibility. But if the council wants to change it, that's, that's fine. Because if you notice, I don't put my name on a whole lot of sponsors, because I will not do that unless I am serious about it. And I think that's what, no council member needs to put their name on anything on the agenda, unless they are serious about it. So, that's my sense of it.
What brought this up was, on the zone change issue, um, whoever was bringing the zone change, it's part of the process, it's part of the legal process. So why do they need to have a, a council and sponsor it, when it's already granted to them in the process, to come to the council for the zone change?
So your biggest concern, does anything come from, from planning and zoning?
Yeah, it's already in our ordinance, that it goes from planning and zoning to here.
It's in state law.
Why do we, huh?
Yeah, it's in state law.
So should we, should we include annexations and zone changes?
Well, and I wanted to steer clear of that, because then you're, then you're creating confusion. Because the state law still says, you still have to have somebody to introduce that ordinance. You can't get around that just by saying, well, the statute says you have, the council can pass the ordinance, because council can also not pass the ordinance.
But we do not put a sponsor up, maybe that's ours, that we did this, and you'll have to answer that legal part of it, but we didn't put a sponsor on, you don't have to have a sponsor on the tax, the taxes. This is an increase in taxes, it gets passed without them.
That's not what your municipal order says.
That's what, originally, we never did that with, if you all remember, we didn't do it with the taxes. But can you change the language, if you wanna change the language to have sponsorship, if you wanna change the language on the, the, just the introduction of a zone change, change that interduct, change that language to this, but basically, oh, things change to a sponsor?
We, we can do that. I'm, I'm just trying to suggest that you, your policy as a council, I, I don't think there's any other councils that have an actual policy regarding sponsorship or introduction. But if we're gonna have a written policy on it, let's make it consistent with all the state law requires, which is, a council member must essentially place it on the agenda. And if people are having a hesitation about having to sponsor it, because sponsor implies support, that, that creates an issue for a council member. What happens if you get a super controversial issue, and no council member is even willing to say, I want us to discuss this, because they don't want their name associated with support?
That's okay, that's okay, because there you're losing the point of what we are. Legislature's not supposed to come to this table unless we do sponsor it. Just because somebody else outside of one of the council members wants to talk about it, well, okay, big deal. That's not what we're about. It's for us, if you want something that's controversy, something which you just, the way you described it, it should be all on us, not just call somebody up and say, hey, will you put it on the council, 'cause the mayor wants to discuss it, or the city attorney wants to discuss it, or Joe Blow wants to discuss it? No, we put it on there because we think it's important for the council to discuss it. So that's why I am, I say, leave it as a sponsorship. Just like tonight, Connie, or whoever made the motion for one of the, uh, one of the zone changes, and I seconded it, just so that it would get out there and let it be voted on, but I didn't, I didn't support it. So, you know, it's courage to have your name down there as, as a sponsorship to something. And I say stay with it on sponsorship, 'cause I take this very, very seriously. 'Cause as you all have known, you've been around me enough to know, that I've asked mayor, who is the sponsor of this? And you know that, in the beginning, asked who sponsored it, because that's very important. That's, that's a historical documentation that has your sponsorship on it, it has who voted on this. So ten years from now, somebody goes back and they complain about the townhouses out here, sorry, had to get you, then they'll know. They'll know who sponsored it, they'll know who voted on it, they'll know who approved it and who didn't approve it. So, I mean, I like the sponsorship, just because it's harder, firmer, faster language, and it makes us take things seriously. If we bring it to this table, it should be serious, and sponsor is far more serious than a introduction or discussion.
Well, I have a question in this respect. When, when they've already been through the planning and zoning part of it, and it has to come to council, and nobody sponsors it for it to be talked about, what happens? It's dead?
They're denied, they're denied their process.
Well, it gets approved by law, no?
Yeah, it's automatically approved.
Automatically gets approved.
What if it, what if planning and zoning recommends a denial, and their right is to appeal it to the city council? Right? What is the process for that?
We've had that before, too, yeah.
So does that individual lose their right in the process, because no council member wants to sponsor it?
I mean, that, that's gonna be the case with any, any ordinance. If the council's not willing to bring it up, the council's not willing to bring it up. I mean, that's, no, no one is, no one is guaranteed that right.
But they have a right to appeal at the city council.
They have a right to-
Council doesn't have to approve it.
They have the right to come here and ask the city council that they sponsor an ordinance. They pass an ordinance, but nobody, none of the council members legally have to even offer that up on the table. If there's crickets, then that's the result.
When it comes to other ordinances, I, I don't have a problem with Karen's position. But when we have a process for a citizen or individual to, to bring a zone change or annexation, and it's already in the process, that you're gonna go from here to here to here, why do they need a sponsor for that?
Well, maybe, as Karen said, maybe you should just put introduce it to the city council?
Well, that's what we-
Well, I wanna clarify, that the reason why I put my name on it was because they would do that process, and if I hadn't have done it, it would've passed anyway.
Right.
And everything that we had heard before they came in here and discussed it was not the truth.
And I'm okay with it being the way it is.
And I think Connie did the right thing, vote, I was kidding her about the, the townhouse. But I think Connie did the right thing by putting it up here, and that's why I seconded it, so that we could get a vote done for it, because they deserve the vote, and the council deserves a time to, to act on it, and not let it just pass through without us acting one way or the other. But I really think the sponsorship, it should stay a sponsorship. And what Chuck's saying on that, if they have a, an appeals process to come to us, it should be up to us, whether we do or we don't, and then we can take the sponsor. The sponsor does get it out on the table, the sponsor doesn't have to vote for it. So on this part of it, if you wanna take out, that you can withdraw your sponsorship and let somebody else pick it up, I don't really care about that so much as it needs to be a sponsor. And the other thing, because Mayor Barney had to work through it, myself working through it, and, and for Mayor Prather to work through it, it does another form of accountability with it, because it should be the executive, uh, the, not the executive body to bring up legislation, it should be us to do that. Now, the mayor needs to sometimes get things out there that we're not aware of, and, and it's not on our radar. And that's why he goes to the council members and talks to a council member and says, okay, here's what I need, will you help me, will you sponsor it? And that provides more communication, it's also another check and balance, so it's a positive. It's not a negative to have it as sponsorship.
Can I make one thing clear in this conversation? I don't care. Council members asked me to evaluate this, I did it at the request of council members. I don't care. It's whatever you all wanna do. This is not my recommendation. I was responding to council members asking that this be clarified.
I don't think, as I said, it was, was from-
And honestly, I, again, the, the question that Chuck, the problem that Chuck asked me to solve was, what do we specifically do about ones that we know we need to hear, but we don't wanna put our names as a sponsor? And rather than start carving things out, which is where we get into trouble, just take away what the objection was. Again, it stayed this way, and we've, we've lived with it for four years now, and I, I don't have a problem with it reading that way. All I know is the, the- All I know is the state law only requires that introduction, but you all want to keep it a sponsor, keep it a sponsor.
Well, I'd like to be clear, because I don't care either, okay? Except for when it comes to the legal process says a person is entitled to this process. We can't deny that.
They they weren't denied.
No, they weren't this time, but they could have been.
I don't think they've ever been denied.
I don't know of anybody that's ever been denied.
Yeah, it could have been, but.
This this was a tough one, this was probably our most controversial one.
No, no.
We've had some good ones down the road.
No, I'm talking about since I've been on.
Yeah.
Probably been the most.
In three years, it's.
In three years, this is probably the toughest one you all got.
This is toughest one this council's.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's not a right or wrong, it's a matter of opinion, you know?
And and Mayor. Mayor put it out very well, said Connie Connie sponsored this, that doesn't mean she's fully supporting of it, that she had to have somebody's name on it to bring it out for discussion.
And I think you've been done that before, and then.
And I've said it.
And you brought it to the table, and then you didn't vote for it.
Didn't go for it, yeah.
Well, let's, let's, go ahead, Mark. No, go ahead, I'm sorry. Okay. If you read it the way it's written, it says whoever sponsors it has to be prepared to discuss it the first reading, the merits, the purpose, the need for of said ordinance.
Now, I sponsor it because it's need to be discussed by this council. Bingo. Right?
Mayor, I think, I think this is very serious.
It has been a good night.
We got a lot done.
Oh, yeah.
Ten o'clock.
Hey.
I'm hungry, boys.
I am, too.
So thirsty.
We're still.
I'm watching you drink that bottle of water, and it's looking pretty good.
Queen ate four can.
All right, all right. Chuck, are you saying that you would like to see if on planning and zoning that it be introduced? It don't, not have been introduced?
My position is that nobody should have to sponsor it or introduce it from planning and zoning, because it's automatically in the process to go from planning and zoning to council.
Well, planning and zoning may be introducing it to the council.
I can't make you there, because.
But it's not really state law, you said it was just an attorney general's opinion. And they can be wrong.
They can be, but we're not.
We're not gonna fight a moment, are we?
We're not, we can't go there. Every ordinance, every ordinance needs to be placed onto the table for consideration by a council member, regardless of the state statutory scheme by which it gets here.
That's fine with me. Chuck, you pick out the ones you support. Fuck it, if you don't support it, don't sponsor it.
Well, I mean, that's the reason this came up, I was asked to support these two ordinances, and I said, wait a minute, why do I have to support a zoning ordinance?
Yeah.
It's coming from planning and zoning.
The state law says you have to support ordinances, or you have to get them on the table.
Mark, did you want to make?
Mark don't know what to say.
He doesn't know, he's forgotten, probably.
Sorry about that, Mark.
I'm exhausted on this one.
Well, then, then why don't we just let you begin the beginning of the end of council comments? I'll let you start.
I, I'm good.
You're good. Chuck?
No, I'm having a hard time getting my point across anyway, so I'm just gonna stop.
Okay.
You know, when I'm tired and David's hungry, so I don't have anything.
Let me see what I can sponsor here.
David, you got anything?
Well, I'm not gonna be the Scrooge in this bunch.
Merry Christmas.
I'm gonna wish every one of you all a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you.
Tracy, your staff, Mayor, your staff, all the council members and the city employees of this community and the county.
That's outstanding.
Well, even Santa does that.
That's right.
That's why I wasn't the Scrooge tonight.
I love somebody got up to the podium, was as good a beard as some Marvin.
Yeah.
And his his son looked just like him.
Is that right?
That's my nephew.
Millie?
Oh, that's it?
I'm good, I sprained my ankle about five o'clock, so that's the reason I came in here, just dedicated to, David helped me up the steps. I missed the bottom two steps at home, and I landed right on my knees, and I thought, well, let's just come here and get through this meeting.
Oh, my goodness.
Millie, Millie.
I needed a bag of frozen peas, that's what I need. Need a bag of frozen peas. Put on my ankle.
Polly's not around.
Come on, council comments.
I would like to say, I am very glad that they're doing RFQs, because this wall is so bad, and Millie and I get mold headaches. We're here over the two hours, and she's been sneezing, and I had to go get a drink, because I've got such a bad mold headache.
Okay, we got you on record, we got you on record.